And we're recording, Chair.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Good evening and welcome to the May 19th, 2020 Planning Commission Regular Video Meeting. It is now 6:01 in the evening and this Planning Commission meeting is now in session. My name is Daniel Hubbell and I am the Planning Commission Chair. And tonight's virtual Planning Commission meeting is being brought to you using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Zoom video of this meeting is also being broadcast live and will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel for future enjoyment. CPD Deputy Director Allison Van Corp and other staff members will be participating in tonight's meeting remotely as well. Public audience members who are listening to the meeting by telephone or via Zoom, please welcome or we welcome you. And thank you for joining us tonight. If the commissioners would please have your microphones turned on and Senior Admin Andrea Larson will be conducting roll call for attendance. Andrea.
Chair Hubbell.
Present.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman. I didn't hear you, Tiffin. Commissioner Goodman.
Are you here? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
And Commissioner Weinberg.
Present.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for this meeting. As we have done in the past, we will obviously be using Zoom. I will do my best, as I have in the past, to recognize you in the order in which hands are raised when we get to discussion. And after being recognized, you can answer your questions. If you would like, you can use the button to raise your hand electronically. I'll do my best to notice those. But also just feel free to raise your hand or somehow otherwise get my attention as we've been doing. Thank you very much. The next portion of our meeting is for appearances. The appearances portion of the meeting will be for any individuals wishing to speak during the meeting on any issue in front of the commission. I'll also mention that we have a public hearing later in the agenda. And so if your comments are related to the public hearing, to please wait until that moment. Andrea, do we have anybody waiting to be recognized?
No, Chair. We had no one who signed up to speak per appearances.
Great. Thank you very much. Then we can skip over the rules of appearances. Uh, we'll move on to our next item, which is a continuation of the public hearing. I should also, by the way, state I've been sitting all day, so I'm standing. So if I start rocking and moving too much, please just yell at me and call me out, but I need to distract your mind back. So a next item on the agenda is our public hearing, a continuation of the public hearing from last month, which is ZTR 19-004 related to the wireless code update. This public hearing is for the review of the proposed changes to the wireless code, to which some updates, I believe, were posted in the interim between the last meeting. At this point, the public hearing, we will reopen the public hearing as a continuance. And I would ask, it is, I guess I have to say the time, it is 6:05 PM. And anyone wishing to provide public testimony, please audibly state your name for the record and you will have three minutes. Andrea, do we have anyone that has signed up for the hearing?
No, Chair. No one signed up to provide comment during the hearing.
Thank you. Being that we have no one signed up for the hearing, I do know that there was, I believe, at least one set of comment that had been sent to us. I forget if it was prior to the last meeting or this meeting, but please note that if you've sent comments electronically, the email, we have captured those and they are a part of the record for this business. And if there's no further testimony, we'll now close the public hearing as of again 6:05 PM. That brings us to regular business and the first item of regular business will be the review and consideration of the minutes from April 21st, 2021. And before we do that, I would like to mention that Governor Inslee's proclamation, number 20-28 regarding the Open Public Meetings Act, has been extended indefinitely until the end of the current pandemic commissioners. So with that, that allows us to do this electronically. Commissioners, for the matter of the minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 21st, 2021?
They're moved.
Thank you very much. It was moved by Commissioner Weinberg and seconded by Commissioner Murphy. Do we have any corrections, updates, or comments related to the minutes? Commissioner Boatsman?
Yes, um, I think that there should be another bullet point added to the commission provided the following feedback section. And the bullet that I think should be added would say, consider removing or revising 19.21C to avoid conflating small wireless installations with new street lighting in neighborhoods. I think we did, you know, we did discuss that and that that should be in the list of things that we give feedback about.
Okay.
Carolyn, can you repeat that for me one more time? I was having technical difficulties on my end.
Consider removing or revising 19.21C to avoid conflating small wireless installations with new street lighting in neighborhoods.
Can I read that back to you to make sure I captured it correctly?
Go back.
Consider removing or revising 19.21.C to avoid conflating small wireless installations with new street lighting in neighborhoods.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Allison, were you trying to raise your hand or was that just the shadow from the light?
Yeah, the weird light coming through my window.
No worries. Oh. Okay, thank you. The, uh, are there any other, do we need a motion to for that change? Or can we take that Allison as a or Andrea as a, as a change?
That was a fairly substantial addition, so I would say it would probably be better for us to have a motion so that we make sure we have consensus of everyone.
Okay.
Or at least a friendly amendment and thumbs up from everyone would probably. I just want to make sure that everybody's good with the addition.
Yep. Um, Carolyn, do you want to, you don't need to rephrase it, but is that a motion on your behalf?
Yes, so moved. I should have presented it as a motion. Rusty.
No worries, no worries. Is there a second to that motion?
A little second.
Seconded by Commissioner Weinberg. Do you want to say any comments, Carolyn, beyond what you've presented or does anybody have any questions?
No, I, I, I don't think I really have any further comments other than that. It's just kind of in that general list of things that we threw out there for further consideration.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments related to the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like that was five. I'll call it for formality. Any opposed? Seeing none, the amendment passes five to zero. Are there any other comments or additions or amendments to the minutes from April the 21st? Okay, hearing none. Andrea, would you like to call a, a roll call vote, please, on the approval of the minutes?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Chair Hubbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman? Can't hear you again, Tiffin.
Um, yeah.
There you go. Yeah, there you go.
I just have to use a bigger voice.
Commissioner Weinberg?
Aye.
And Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
We just have to get used to using our outside voices, Tiffin.
Motion passed, minutes are approved.
Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, great, that will take us to item number two, which is further discussion deliberation and hopefully a final decision related to, sorry, I have to pull up the citation number here. ZTR 19-04 related to the wireless code update and I will hand it over to our Deputy Director Allison.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, let me share my screen really quick. I just have about two slides summarizing the changes. Yeah, before you can see that, let me back up here. Okay. So there's about nine changes to the code. I'll bring it up on my screen in a moment to go through some of the more substantive changes. I think the first three were just some consistent use of terminology. So we've chosen to use director rather than code official. And then we had some discussion last time about the use of feasible or technically feasible or technologically feasible. We've made the decision to change it to just simply feasible for clarity. That's a defined term in the code. And we thought it would be best just to sync up with that terminology so that it's, it's clear what is intended. And then finally, the wireless communication facility, which is abbreviated as WCF, and small wireless facilities. So those are the two terms that we've used. WCFS are generally the larger facilities and then small wireless facilities are sometimes called small cells. And then I'll go through each of these other changes in the draft and just show you as we walk through, but there are about six or eight other changes. Let me just shift screens here. Let's see, I'm going to make that bigger. So, sorry for scrolling. As I was saying, there's a lot of changes to the terminology. I'm not going to go over those one by one. I'm sure you've noticed that as you review the draft. They are highlighted here. Oh, and I should mention Commissioner Boatsman noticed this afternoon, about an hour or two ago, that the draft amendment that was published with the packet unfortunately came out as black and white. And so it was a little harder to see these revisions in that version. I did email out the color version to the commission about an hour ago, so hopefully you received that. And then that's what I have up on my screen here so that these newer revisions do pop out. Apologize for that.
Also been fixed in the online packet.
Good question.
Yeah.
Am I muted or what? Let's see here. No, I guess I'm not. Um, I may be extremely ignorant here, but the red was the last times, uh, changes and the blue is the new ones?
The previous changes were shown just in underline or strike through with black. And then it came out with blue or purple. It doesn't really mean anything. Those are the changes that were made in this round and Eileen and I went back and forth a couple of times with the draft between us. I can't remember. I think she might be blue and I was purple, but it doesn't matter. The blue and purple are just inclusive of all the changes that we made together.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to continue scrolling down here. And this version I have up, I actually put yellow highlight over the things I wanted to talk about, just so I could find them more easily. So we made this change here about temporary wireless communication facilities may not be deployed. We struck through the exception for emergencies. It says, it can be deployed longer than 30 days in case of emergency or natural disaster. And the director may authorize a longer period. So there's no longer that 90-day limit. If anyone has questions as I go, feel free just to speak up or raise your hand to be recognized. It's hard for me to see everyone, so definitely try to grab my attention. Okay, now here in this Exhibit C and Section 1906075, there's several changes. The first is there was this piece about generators being prohibited in the right of way. And someone asked last time about what about the case of emergency? And so I spoke to the city engineer about this and he said he would like to see an exception there for emergencies and natural disasters. So we added that phrase in. And then here on number two, this was the part about noise that we talked about for quite some time at the last meeting. And Eileen and I went back and forth a few times trying to redraft this and this is what we came up with. Be happy to hear any further suggestions for revisions tonight, or if this looks good, then that would be great. So it says, "Small wireless facilities shall be designed to limit noise impacts. Noiseless facilities are preferred. Applicants shall deploy small wireless facilities utilizing passive cooling systems when feasible. If an applicant demonstrates that passive cooling is infeasible, they may deploy a small wireless facility utilizing a mechanical cooling system with the lowest feasible noise profile. In any event, no small wireless facility equipment shall be operated so as produced noise in violation of Chapter 8.24 MICC." So I'll just pause there and see if anyone had comments on that section because I know we talked about it quite a bit last time.
Carolyn?
Well, I have a question. I guess I don't quite understand. If we're at this point just sharing comments, aren't we going to do that when we have our deliberation where we talk about suggested changes? I guess I'm kind of confused.
I guess what I would say is if anyone has non-substantive changes, like maybe hey, can we switch a word here or there? Or I noticed a grammar mistake. Let's try to just take care of those as we go. If you have a more substantive change, you could mention it now, but it might make most sense to do that as a motion so to see if we have consensus from the commission.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, if there's something you'd like to flag to talk about more later, you could do that now. And then we can kind of continue through the draft and come back to it after that.
Did that clarify, Carolyn?
Yeah, yeah. Um, yes, thank you. I, I, I think the sorts of comments I have are probably more for later. Although I will point out that I have a little bit of difficulty. I have one computer and I have my comments about this draft, you know, in another file. And at such time, I, I, if I remember something as I go through and follow here, I'll bring it up. But it could be that I won't get to it till later and we're going through the draft code.
Okay.
All right, I'll continue. Um, okay, so number four here. This, I think, Commissioner Meacham brought up last time and wanted to make sure that we had a good provision related to ADA clearance on sidewalks and right-of-ways. And so we made a couple edits here just to make it very clear that the replacement or addition of new poles and associated equipment needs to comply with all of our sidewalk and street standards, their regulations, including ADA, maintain a path of travel. And then in number five, it goes on to further say that the right-of-way needs to be restored, including paving sidewalks to provide clear and safe passage. So if they're removing an old pole, which would leave some kind of hole in the pavement of the sidewalk, that needs to be repaired or restored to make a safe path of travel. So I know Commissioner Meacham is no longer with us, but I hope that that addresses the concerns she raised last month. Then on number six here, just a small clarification, we changed this to signage on equipment shall be of the minimum size and number possible to achieve the intended purpose amount. I think folks I mentioned last time seemed a little vague, so hopefully this takes care of it. Again, some of these smaller edits to terminology. Okay. Coming down to number seven here. So this is related to, we call it the secondary use of poles. So when the wireless use is secondary to something else like power, phone lines, and that primary use no longer needs the pole, so power's undergrounded, for example. Then what happens with the remaining pole with the wireless facility? So we've just added a sentence here, a phrase to clarify that it is possible to keep that pole in the location if a permit is obtained that includes a full review under these code sections. And basically what that means is that a new pole would need to come up, would need to meet existing standards. And if it doesn't, a new pole location and, and design would need to be identified that could meet current day standards. And so that would mean that like the ADA provision we talked about a minute ago would need to be complied with regardless. So either the existing location would need to be already in compliance or they'd have to remove that pole and create a new one that complies. So that's intended to deal with kind of these non-conforming poles that might be out there from a long time ago and give us a way to bring things up to date. This similar provision is repeated down below because I think this might have gotten brought up at the last meeting too. There's sort of repetitive language in a couple of sections here. That's because they each relate to a different type of pole or situation. So this one is facilities on non-wooden poles. And then I think it has to do with facilities on wooden poles when we come down below. But it's the same language that we just looked at and just repeated in this section. Just scanning, I think that may have been the last, that, that was the last substantive change. So that's it for my overview. I think I'll leave my screen share on in case anyone wants to talk about specific language, but I'll just throw it out now for questions and comments.
Thank you, Allison. As a quick point of order before I, before I take the questions, Andrea, do you recall, do we have a motion already active on the floor from last meeting? Or was it just, uh, I forget if we had started the motion?
We did not have a motion on the table because the public hearing was still open. We left the last meeting to just discussion.
That's right. That was the only thing that we continued. Okay, great. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure I knew where we were in the process. Great. So I think the way to do this, I, I see both Ted and Carolyn have hands up. Let's ask sort of clarifying questions about this and then what we'll do is we'll get a motion on the floor and then use that as the opportunity to go through and actually discuss and deliberate, deliberate any changes or additions, et cetera. So I heard Ted first and then we'll go to Carolyn.
Yeah, um, I noticed in the, the language of the code that we have here currently, it expresses a preference for soundless equipment over equipment that has a fan that makes sound, which is good. I noticed that then we have these three sections that we're just reading that talk about if you're using a wood pole to this, if you're using a non-wood pole, then do this, et cetera. But it doesn't express a preference as in if there's no pole there yet and the writer's trying to decide what kind of put there. Should there be a preference or is there, is it really kind of a toss-up in terms of the overall impact to the community, whether the pole is solid core wood or has a hollow core metal on the inside? I guess that's more a question for the rest of the commissioners than it is for the, uh, for Allison, but I'm not sure this is the right time to bring that up or should I bring it up, uh, not during the questions but during the deliberation?
Yeah, let's, I think, get into that during the deliberation since it's really more about sort of the, of the opinion of, of the commission versus clarifying questions for Allison.
Okay.
But thank you. Let's come back to that. Carolyn? You're on mute, Carolyn, still.
Sorry. What I wanted to ask is related to what Ted was asking, but I guess I do consider these questions for the staff because I'm trying to understand the code here. I, I wouldn't really be able to address this as well in a deliberation, so I.
Sure.
I, I, I also was looking at the code and looking for a section that told the applicant what kinds of poles are allowed here on Mercer Island and which ones are preferred. I guess I didn't really see that. There's a section on wooden poles, tells you how to, how to work with wooden poles, both new and replacement. Section on non-wooden. But there isn't one that says, and then there's another sort of obtuse reference to if you want to put in a light standard. And that's kind of in a orphan location as far as I could tell. So I'm, I'm also wondering if staff could address that question. Is, did I miss something? Is there a place where it says kind of poles are preferred or allowed?
Don't think we state a preference. It's silent on that. I mean, I, I think typically the entity that owns the pole makes that decision when they apply. So, you know, if it's an energy pole, they're typically doing wooden poles. And most of the poles on the island are PSC-owned. But if it's a standalone pole, just for a small wireless facility, I believe they often want to do the hollow metal pole because then they can conceal some of the equipment inside of it.
Does that come under the standard of non-wooden pole? That, is that what, is that what a hollow metal pole is?
Yeah.
And, and does a light standard come under the category of non-wooden pole?
Well, I think those could be attached to either type of pole.
Oh, no, I don't mean the light fixture. I mean the pole. Like a light standard is a pole. And then, you know, you, you attach the, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there are light standards that have street lights on them. I think in other areas of the light islands, there tend to be wooden poles that might have the kind of hoose neck fixture attached to it.
Yeah, there might even be concrete. I've seen concrete ones or, you know, like cast concrete and like fiberglass resin have been used. I think I've seen some of those in Bellevue, so. Commissioner Murphy, did you have your hand up a moment ago, Richard?
Yeah, I have just one question on page 15. In one of the prior edits in subsection seven toward the top, use the term technologically possible. Should that have been changed to feasible?
I think it should. Does that sound right to Eileen?
I agree. That's a good catch. And I'm sorry that we didn't catch it ourselves. Good catch, Commissioner Murphy.
Okay. Thank you. So changes like that I'm planning to just make on the fly. If we get into more substantive changes, we can do that by motion.
Any other just general questions or clarifications before we get into any substantive change?
Had one thing on language. There was, when you're talking about the federal regulations, there was one word and struck out and. Do you remember which section that was? I guess I'm like the way I actually thought Anne should be there. So I was wondering if if someone could just explain to me why it was taken out.
Do you have any more context on where?
It was yellow. It was one of your yellow. Well, okay, slow down. Let's see. No, not that one. No, there's a lot of red too.
Okay.
Okay, so number four. I'm just trying to read it with all the strike through. So it reads. Placement of replacement poles and new poles and any associated equipment shall comply with city construction and sidewalk clearance standards. State and federal regulations, including the. Americans with Disabilities Act and shall. Maintain the gravel path. So. Maybe I'm making too much of this, but. I would almost think that you would put a comma after ADA. And then the thing is, the ADA really goes with the state and federal regulations, I think, not the city construction. Standards correct? Or is that part of it?
The ADA goes with federal regulations.
So. I guess what I'm wondering is, should the and be put back?
I don't know.
I wonder if it's possible just to flag it for one more reread, and I'd be happy to. It's just like it reads like it's a little bit open to different interpretations to me.
And if I could, I think maybe we also need to put the state and federal law and regulations, and I'm sorry for this, we should have caught this earlier. But regulations are administratively promulgated by agencies as opposed to laws which are passed by Congress. So it's a distinction with the difference.
Okay, that's good.
Eileen, are you suggesting it should be both, say, federal laws and regulations, not just regulations?
Indeed.
I saw her blackout regulations and I thought, I don't think that's what you meant.
Thank you. Okay, shall comply with. How about?
I think you can remove the comma after travel. Just say, and shall maintain the path of travel in order to provide a clear and safe passage within.
You know, what if in if you put state and like right after. Shall comply with state and federal laws and regulations, including the Americans with Disabilities Act, comma, city construction and sidewalk clearance standards. Comma, and shall maintain the path of travel. Like if you flip it to me, then it doesn't. Sound as confusing. Okay, let's see. Now, what do people think? Is that better? Or at least not worse?
I don't think we've done any harm. And I think in in five years, someone with a different grammatical background than us is going to come back and say, what the hell were they thinking?
It works for me. I will admit, I'm definitely not the person that cares about Oxford commas and all that kind of business. So if it works for Eileen, then I can work it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other last questions or scrivener's corrections that we want to? Update before moving into a motion? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a draft motion in the packets?
There was not.
Dan.
Okay. Hi, yes, Carolyn, yes.
Yeah. I forgot to mention something I want to ask Allison also about this. Allison, in our email today, we were talking about. The idea that we could discuss tonight whether to. To rec, well. We were discussing the possibility of. Changing the notification requirement for. Small wireless facilities. I hope I'm expressing that correctly. And I don't know, I can't remember if this draft or this draft has that spelled out in it. But your recommendation was to wait until fall. Because the notification regulations are going to be maybe considered in total at that time. Is this the time to discuss this matter? Or? Is it a?
It would be a change to the code. I'm not sure. So. I would say that's probably more the next piece if you're going to propose a change.
Can't hear you, Allison.
You're just really quiet, Allison.
Oh, sorry. I don't know why. I think if you're intending to propose an amendment, that would really be a substantive change that we should pick up in the next. Section of the agenda. I'd be happy to provide a little more context to what you just mentioned, if that helps people understand.
Yeah, that would help. I'm not, I'm not considering proposing an amendment in that regards, but I did want to. Okay, address the topic. And I was thinking maybe this would be the best time to do it before we get a motion on the floor.
So the issue that Commissioner Bozeman raised was in regards to. The noticing procedures related to small wireless facilities. And she pointed out that. If a wireless facility was proposed for an existing pole. Our current. Standards require it's a type two application, and that would require public notification in the weekly bulletin only. It would not have. What we call public notice that includes signs and mailings to nearby residents. And so, you know, in this scenario, if someone's not reading the weekly bulletin every week, every Monday. Which I'm sure not very many residents. Weekly bulletin. They might not even know that this facility was going in until in fact it was put in place. And I think that's true. If, you know, they didn't see the notification. This could be added to an existing utility pole, the small cell facility facility could be added to an existing pole. And they may come home one day and see it, and that'd be their first first warning that it was happening. So what I said was, it would be possible to exchange the notification requirements. However. Daniel Thompson proposed a code amendment as part of the docket last fall related to that code section. Part of. The administrative section of our code, and he made some. Recommended changes that would adjust. The categorization of certain types of land use and change of notification requirements for those. And so because that's a totally different code section, it was not included in these drafts that we've shared with the public. To date related to wireless code, I was recommending that we could consider. A change in notification requirements for wireless at that time when we're looking at that code section. We're planning to take that up this fall. It's on our work plan.
Thank you, Allison. I I really wanted to sort of get that in context and. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, Allison, especially considering we'd have to like renotice the.
I think if we wanted to look that up on another code section that hasn't been considered by public yet.
I think too, that was just, that's a separate ordinance under the single subject rule. So it really needs to go. In a different context than wireless, unless you're creating a brand new notice standard just for wireless as opposed to just changing type two noticing.
Yep. Great. Well, we'll. Pick that up. When when we open that piece of business later in the year. Okay, so with that, since we don't have, I just found the section, we don't have a. Proposed. Motion, I'll just open it to the floor. Does anybody have a? Motion to approve the. Drafted code amendments. Related to wireless facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Goodman. Great. Now let's, now let's debate. Yeah. So if anybody has any changes or comments or things that they would like to bring to the floor. Go ahead and let me know. And then. Maybe if you can just indicate if you do, and then what I'll do is I'll just sort of take everyone in order. I know Carolyn, you've got a few things, I believe. Does anybody else have anything that they're going to bring forward or want to discuss? Ted, maybe. Okay, Carolyn, why don't we start with you then? And then we'll go to Ted and then see if anybody else has anything else to add after that.
Okay, I'm seeing if I can find my my draft here. Oh, okay, that's marked up. Alrighty. Okay. Here's a. Starting at the very top, page one. In your whereas is in your ordinance, one, two, three, four, five, the fifth whereas. Where you talk about the possible effects of. These type of facilities. After visual blight, I would. Move that we add the word noise comma before interference with public facilities and equipment. So would you like that? Are you looking for? Motions to amend at this point, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, that would be certainly the strict interpretation of process. However. You know, I I think there's. Yeah, let's just do it that way. And then that way it'll be on the record so that we have a solid record of it. So it sounds like you have moved to add the addition of noise. In front of and between visual blight and interference. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Goodman. Great. Do you want to speak at all to that, Carolyn? It seems pretty self explanatory, but.
I'm just going with the self explanatory thing. I mean, we we try to kind of outline what what some of the issues are here to introduce it. And so I do think noise is is a factor. So. That's all I have to say.
I think you need to come after noise.
Yeah, I think I think I said noise comma.
Yeah, I got it. I saw you were saying that.
Okay. Alrighty. And then.
Okay, any other? Anybody have any comments? Related to this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment as proposed, please say aye and raise your hand, please. And any opposed, seeing none, the amendment will pass five to zero.
Okay, then moving down to page four. Here. Dan, may I ask a question about something I may not need to make a motion?
Sure.
This could have been something I could have asked before, but I'm afraid I didn't see it.
That's that's all right. We're in discussion as well. So go ahead.
Okay. Okay. On page four, A1 permitted use. You, I'm wondering if at the very. End of the second sentence, you would want to say they're also not permitted in the town center. District and the business zone. The reason I'm asking is because in the first sentence, you say. These things are permitted in one, two, three, four places. Then you say that. WCS with support structures are permitted in. Two of those four places, but not permitted in one of those four places. What about the other one of the four places? Is that just a little error? Or is there some reason why business zone is not spelled out?
I don't know. It seems like, you know, this would have been in the existing code from long ago. It does seem like it was probably an error, but I don't know.
Well, you want to fix it, in which case I will make a motion or. Leave it alone.
It's it. So what we're looking at, Carolyn, is that in that's that third line, it's missing. The the present tense of business and planned business zone district.
It it, in my view, it would say it, the second sentence would enter, would end with. And are not permitted in the town center district and business zones. So you would be adding and business zones to the sentence.
So here's where I would worry is that. Is because it says they're permitted in commercial office and planned business zone districts. Did they forget to put business and planned business? Or did they forget to put it at the end? Like I could see them forgetting to put it in either place. And by placing it in either place, we're making a. Making a stand.
Silence on it. It's currently not permitted. So if we add it to the left side, we would then be permitting it. And if we added it to the right side, I think that would. Keep it how it is.
So are you saying it would be corrected if we added the additional three words? Is that correct?
I don't think it's clear, at least I'm not finding it clear. I don't I don't know how it was supposed to read before. This I cannot, this very much predates me, obviously. It predates all the staff here. It might predate BO even. You know, it looks like this portion of the ordinance was last touched in 2018. So I just, you know, this is a good catch, but I don't know that we know how to correct it. I don't think we, I think we have two options. We don't know which one's correct.
Yeah, it seems to be that the code is currently silent about can you put a new pole on the grounds in the business? Zone. And. We're trying to decide, should it be allowed or not allowed? And I don't think that our predecessors who created the code provided any guidance along those lines. Do we know where on the island we have a something that is a business zone as opposed to a planned business zone?
So the planned business zone PBZ, that's the South End Shopping Center. Business zone. I believe there's a few properties near City Hall in a business zone. Not sure if Andrew or Lauren are familiar with any other places.
Is something maybe someone could check on during a break? Or can it be just corrected after? Like, could we just make a motion to correct it?
Please, we don't know if it's to, because it's kind of silent as to whether it should be allowed. Should we allow a new pole to be dug into the ground?
Here's what I would recommend. Let's make a note of this. And when we send this to council, we should just make a note that we found something that we don't know how to reconcile. Because we don't understand the history of it, and they can choose to. Do one or the other, because frankly, I I like read it in both ways, and I could see. How and why you would make an argument to do it either way. I don't know enough of the distinction between the PBZ and the business zones and why they were different. To make a decision tonight. But I do think we should flag it for the council, at least so that they understand that. There may be something.
That sounds good to me if that's. That sounds good to me if that's a way we can do things.
Yeah, we've built um in some conversations that we've had uh over the last six months, uh one of the things that we've done is tried to make it so that we can have a communicate to that attaches to the recommendation when it goes to council and then um also the opportunity for the chair, the vice chair to address um the council um when they do their first review of this. So I'm I'm just gonna make a note that this is something that we should flag for them given the lack of stuff, because I do think it's a a great catch. Is everyone, is everyone uh amenable to that? Okay.
Okay. You bet. Up to comment. Uh down on page six. Okay, um if I can find my own comment here. Oh, here it is. Okay, um. Okay, um the third paragraph on page six, WCS on the properties may be attached, et cetera, et cetera. Let's see. Okay, let's see, one, two, third sentence. In Island Crest Park, et cetera, the equipment cabinets may be placed above ground if the director determines there is a significant benefit to the parks. So I was thinking it sounded to me like you were trying to give the director the option to require them to be above ground in order to protect trees and vegetation. But when you use the word may, it really doesn't, it's like you're giving the permission to the applicant. So I'm wondering if you meant to say shall instead of may. And if you meant to say shall, I will so move to say shall instead of may.
In the prior sentence, it says they shall be placed underground if feasible. And then it says they may be placed above ground if the director determines there's a significant benefit to the parks. So I think to me that correctly states that they shall be underground except if the director determines there's a benefit. And then he has the option to allow them to be above ground.
So you just want to give them an option to place it above ground. You don't want to give the director the power to require it to be above ground to protect trees?
Well, I think the director does have the power to make that call.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah. Okay.
I'm reading this is the I'm I'm reading it as it should be underground or as it says there shall be underground. Um and in the case of, let's say, where they want to put it is adjacent to a tree and by digging a s- a vault in the ground might destroy the root system of that tree and potentially kill it and remove it. And you know, it's a tree of some significance, the director could say, no, you can't put it underground. You need to have it above ground and locate it five or ten feet away so that it doesn't, you know, damage the that's the way I would read this, is that?
That's how I'm reading it as well.
Well, in that case, you should give the director the authority. I think both of them should be shall. You shall place it underground if feasible. You shall place it above ground to protect trees.
I I I totally get what you're saying, but I don't think you can have two shelves in a single requirement, because then you're basically saying that you have to do both things.
Well, let's see then, how can we word it? Okay, so you could say um they shall be underground except for um if the director determines in this other location that they have to be above ground. Now, I I don't have that in a sentence for you, but make an exception. And then you 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 solve that language problem and protect the trees.
You could potentially put in like somewhere like the director can require it to be above ground if it's determined that there's a significant benefit to the parks.
And that would work too.
Yeah, that's that's what I was thinking. Uh the equipment cabinets may be required above ground. If the director determines there's a significant.
And that would work.
You know, we're missing a uh an assumption that's buried in here and that is that the provider does not want to bury it because of the cost. And they would probably, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time want it above ground because it's a whole lot cheaper. So we're, that's implicit in this, but you know, it may not be always the case, so.
Yeah.
I think Dan, Dan, your approach to adding maybe a sentence down below that gives the director the authority to require it is appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I uh I think it it I I mean, in the way I read this, that after the blue portion, if the director determines that there's significant benefit to the park, blah, blah, blah. Um that gives the director the discretion and also gives the director the direction that they need on the criteria that would be required to allow that decision to happen. So that just because they want to, because it's cheaper, wouldn't be a good enough answer and therefore shall be placed underground.
So I I would have a a wording suggestion here uh for consideration. Um just change the second sentence. In Island Crest Park, et cetera, the director may require the cabinets to be placed above ground if it is determined that there's a significant benefit to the parks, et cetera, et cetera. So instead of making the equipment cabinets be the subject of the sentence, make the director if the, you know, the director is the actor here in the sentence.
Well, you could, you could put it in the alternative, the director may allow or require the cabinets to be placed above ground.
And that would work too. The director may allow. Let's see.
Will placed above ground if.
Or require, okay.
If, and then you can remove director uh in the blue. Above ground if. Uh oh, no, uh I guess you have to have that.
I think it works.
You would just say if, if there is a significant benefit, that's what you can do, just if, so from if uh in that sentence, you can say if and then delete everything up to there. To be placed above ground if there is a significant benefit to the parks by either the retention of trees and or vegetation. Do you know, do you see where I'm doing that?
So how does that whole sentence come together then?
I got a little distracted, sorry.
So in that fourth line, uh may be placed above ground or equipment cabinets to be placed above ground if and then delete everything through there in the next line. And then it would read Island Crest Park. The director may allow or require the equipment cabinets to be placed above ground if there is a significant benefit to the parks by either the retention of trees and or vegetation or the improvement of park uses.
Yeah, that would, that would be good. But I would get both, both situations.
Okay, I don't think that it changes the intent, so um I don't think we need a motion for that.
The only thing you're missing is oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just think it was changing the way it was worded to make it more clear. I don't think it was changing the intent. So if you're okay with that, Allison, we won't need a motion. Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
The only thing that you've you've taken out the word determines, you know, determines that there's a significant benefit. I mean, if somebody's coming in with an appli- application and they have to do something one way or the other depending on if there's a significant benefit. Who's determining if there's a significant benefit? If you could keep the word determine in there somehow, I think it would be better. And I think, I think it can be done. It's it's just another tweak.
So we can sit here and and wordsmith it all day. I mean, I, someone has to make a determination that there's a significant benefit. I'm not sure determines. We've already stated, and I think you've made a good call in putting the director as the actor up in the front of the sentence. Um and so the action would be the director may allow when these conditions exist and the condition is there's a significant benefit to the park.
Yeah, I mean, you could just say if it is determined that there's a significant benefit and it still says the same thing, but okay. Sounds good, something like that. So you don't think we need a motion?
Um I don't, I don't think it's changed the intent. I really think we were just sort of moving the pieces around there, so unless Andrea tells me that she thinks that it's substantive enough that we need to do that. Andrea, uh you, you're coming on.
Don't think so. It was just kind of clarifying what was there. I could go either way on this one. If we have consensus of everyone, I think it's okay.
I don't think it changed the substance of uh or the intent of what was there.
No, no, that was where I was going.
Yeah. All right, well, uh let me uh uh then ask just by a raise of hands or a show of thumbs. Is everyone sort of in consensus with the wording changes for this? Great. And I'll leave it to our attorney to de- to determine, no pun intended, if determine needs to still be in the sentence.
So right now here, you've got the director having the decision-making authority. It's it's implied that he's gonna make a deter- he or she is going to make a determination as to whether whether to allow or require the cabinets to be above ground. Um so I I don't think you need the word determine there, the director will have to determine whether to allow or require at some point. So I think it's implied and you don't need that extra word.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you, Eileen. Carolyn, any, any others?
Yeah, page nine. C in the middle of the page. Um, my motion is to remove C. To delete it.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for the sake of discussion, but uh I'm trying to read the paragraph first.
Well, let's just consider it seconded and then we can have
Okay.
Carolyn, do you wanna uh uh speak to it while folks are reading what the section is?
Sure, I will, I will um explain my my reasoning. First, I'm gonna start with the second sentence in C. The design of the street light standard shall be in accordance with city lighting requirements in effect at the time of application. Between the last planning commission meeting and this planning commission, I have asked about and been informed by Andrew that the city has no street lighting standards, has no requirements for city lighting to be installed. So, you know, that's the first reason why thi- this this doesn't fit.
Could you clarify that? Is that anywhere in the city or just in certain zones?
The whole city.
There's a street lighting standard in the town center.
The the whole city. I was told that the city does not require lighting to be installed anyplace. There's no standards for what it should be constructed like and no standards for where to put it. That's what I was informed.
I think there are lighting standards in the town center and when big buildings go in, they are required to add.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Allison.
I'm sorry, um there are streetlight standards in the town center and when large buildings go in, they are required to upgrade the street frontage to the current standards, including adding a special kind of streetlights that are in town center. But I think the response that you had was related to everything outside of town center, including the residential neighborhoods, and there are no standards there. And
Okay.
Not any requirements for, you know, residential uses to add streetlights.
Why, and I think maybe the uh my understanding is uh uh the caveat here is that there is no separate street lighting standard, so I do believe that is correct. That the town center code includes a section on street lighting, but it is not a street lighting standard. If like that stands on its own. So I think maybe that's the nuance here that.
Okay, well, I had understood from Andrew that there was you know, no requirements in any of, so so what you're saying, Dan, you know, coincides with what Andrew had explained to me. Um, the other thing is the this type of pole that you put streetlights on is a non wooden pole. So you have a whole section on non wooden poles. And so I don't think we should have a special section on poles that, you know, are highlighted, you know, as as street lighting. Um further, there's a section in the code that points out that small wireless facilities are always secondary to the primary use of the pole. But here you're saying, let's put in a street pole and then put small wireless facilities on it. But there is no requirement for a street po- a a street light there. A streetlight standard. So again, we're conflating putting lighting into neighborhoods with the small wireless um facility code. So I I I think you could just delete this section and figure that in the section on non wooden poles, you know, you've got that covered. Also, this relating back to Ted's original question at the beginning of our discussion with Allison, there doesn't seem to be a section in the code that explains what kinds of poles are allowed. And that doesn't bother me a whole lot unless you start listing a separate kind of pole, a streetlight standard and give a special designation and, you know, permission to that kind of pole. Uh that seems inappropriate. So I think the best thing to do would just be to delete this, and I don't think you've lost anything other than creating situations where lighting is getting mixed up with putting in five G.
Any other comments or questions to what Carolyn has? Commissioner Murphy?
I don't. I I think this motion is is a motion in search of a problem. The it says it'll be put in in accordance with lighting requirements. If there are no lighting requirements for neighborhoods, which is correct, and there would be no requirement that could be used as a basis for adding a five G facility to a streetlight in my neighborhood. So I I don't think there's really a problem there. But where there is street lighting, such as in town center, the point of this is to provide a mechanism to potentially use street light standards to support five G where that might be otherwise appropriate. So I I would be very much opposed to taking this out because it it does seem to serve a purpose, albeit probably a narrow one.
I see your point. But other people may want to comment. I'd like to get back to some, something you said there, but I will wait.
I wonder if it makes sense to, uh, put, uh, I'm sorry, speaking out without, without raising my hand.
Go, go ahead, Ted.
Um, I wonder if it makes sense, uh, after the word application to just say comma, if any. So the sentence reads, "The design of the street light standard shall be in accordance with this uh, city lighting requirements in effect at the time of application, if any." Meaning in some parts of the island, there is no, uh, there, there are no requirements and some parts there, there are.
I think we should be clear here. How, however, I, I, I get your point. There's actually nothing that would prohibit anyone from putting in a, a light pole in a residential neighborhood. There are no standards, therefore it could look however they want it to look. This to me, to Commissioner Murphy's point is we do have standards in the town center of the design, shape, size and uh, color of what the streetlights look like. And I think I interpret this as that they're permitted, you can put a streetlight in anywhere on the island with express written permit of this, permission of the city. And the design shall be in accord, in accordance with any lighting requirement in effect. The only place where we have a requirement in effect is in the town center and all it would govern is that it's going to be green, it's going to be metal, it's going to have that certain size and shape with a particular bulb and a head. But if you were to put in a streetlight in, uh, a pole, a street standard, uh, sorry, a lighting standard in a neighborhood and, uh, put a light pole on it. Basically, there's no standards. You can put a standard, you could put a cheap Cobra head on it if you wanted to. Um, so that's where I'm reading this. I don't know if, if any gives any clarity to the fact that like there's either a requirement at the time of application or there's not. But it's, but it's specific to the design of the light.
It, it, I guess it seems to me that there'd be no incentive for a, uh, wireless uh, facility provider to, uh, be getting into the lighting business. Um, it seems like they're there to, to give everyone a wireless access. And so I think the only place where we would, one would encourage them to use a light standard is where it would make it blend in pretty well with stuff that's already there, in other words, where there's already lighting. I, I don't think we have to worry too much about somebody deciding to put a light pole in the middle of a neighborhood that has no light poles.
Uh, uh, again, I, I agree. And I think this is really about dictating design of the light poles in the town center. If, which is where you're most likely going to see this situation arise anyway.
Well, I think that this section is, is really being misunderstood from the intent of why it was written. It's been explained to me and I have all sorts of email about this in the last month. That the city in, in a, in a neighborhood, there's no requirement to have any lighting. But the, the, the staff has told me that the city engineer has said that if people want to put in a, a, a light pole or if the applicant does put in a light pole, then the city will require lighting to be installed on it. And even though there, there's no, by what, by what authority is that lighting being required? There is no requirement. But they're going to require lighting to be put on it just because it's a streetlight standard. And, um, I'm really concerned about the city, you know, requiring something they don't have any authority to require.
Um, I, I remember in the staff memo, there was a mention of neighbors occasionally petitioning to put a light. So to me, this just leaves that option open. You know, there might be some residential areas of the city where for safety reasons or whatever, the residents there want a streetlight. Um, and essentially this just gives the ability to co-locate the wireless facility on that streetlight to reduce the, um, you know, clutter a little bit. I, I, I don't see this becoming a big problem. I just can't, I just don't, I just can't see that at all. I mean, to me it provides, it's like basically the only thing, you know, I mean, maybe we'd get a co-location, we'd save a little visual clutter. But I mean, I don't even know if this requires, you know, if the neighbor said, hey, can this pole be a streetlight? If, if this would even allow the city to require that or not. So I would kind of agree, I think would be used mostly in the town center or, you know, maybe if the neighbors really wanted one and petitioned for it.
Okay.
But I, I don't think we need the if any words at all. I don't think that.
Yeah, I, I.
It's a good thought, but I don't think it would do anything.
Okay. Uh, Allison, did you catch that, uh, removing the if any?
Kind of waiting to see if anyone else had any comments on that, but if that's the consensus.
I waited to it. We can, we can pull back up.
So, um, okay. I think we've heard any other last statements before we vote on the, uh, motion to remove, uh, item C. Okay. Uh, hearing no other conversation, uh, all those in favor of uh, the removal of item C, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. I, I did it wrong. Can you do it again?
Okay, sorry. All those in favor of removal of item C, please, uh, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Please raise your hands. Say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails one to four.
I wanted to, of course, you know, wait until the motion was, you know, defeated, but I, I will probably, while other people are discussing, I may come back with another uh, amendment that is more specific to certain changes in the sentence, but I, I'll, I will bring that up later. Let me see if I had anything else here. I know, I think. Oh, yes. Okay. Okay. Page 10. Is this page? Okay. Okay. Page 10, the paragraph on noise impacts, which is A2. Um, we discussed, um, well, okay. My motion is to delete the first three sentences of A2 and replace it with the following. Noiseless, small wireless facilities are required if feasible. If noiseless facilities are not feasible, then the facility with the lowest noise profile is required. That's the motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Uh, I'll second it. I believe the, uh, the fourth word in that second line should be with and that will.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Boatsman and seconded by Commissioner Weinberg. Carolyn, do you want to, uh, speak to that at all? It seems pretty straightforward, but feel free to lend us your comments.
Okay. Last time we went back and forth about whether certain types of systems were quieter or not quieter and whether we should, you know, ask for mechanical versus passive. But, you know, we're presuming we know a lot more about this kind of stuff than we do. I think really when we get into those kinds of discussions, I, I really think it's for the applicant to, you know, figure out what at particular point in time is noiseless and what is the lowest noise profile without us trying to specify passive cooling, mechanical cooling, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's what all, all I was trying to do is just say, make it noiseless if feasible, is not feasible, then use the lowest noise profile.
Okay. Um, I, I just have a quick question for our, uh, representative, uh, legal counsel, uh, Eileen. Do you want to lend any, uh, commentary? I know this is off the cuff, but in this wording versus the other wording and uh, if you think there's any in your experience, if this has been used before, this type of language has been used before or not?
So I haven't seen, I guess, this exact language used before. Typically cities just tie to their noise ordinance and we've discussed at length the, I guess, the pitfalls, the, of, uh, the city's current noise ordinance. Um, I, I think both versions work. I think both versions get the job done. Um, it's just a matter of preference. This is a Commissioner Boatsman's wording is a bit more, um, a bit more simple and I, I guess is she's trying to, um, avoid dictating particular types of technology. And so I, I understand that. I think either one is, either one will work for your purposes.
And from an administration standpoint, because there's, because it is more generalized, do either you or any of the other uh, city team, between this and the other version, like is there a, will it make it more or less easy to administer, given the way that the language is done? I'm assuming that noise profile is something that's documented by the manufacturer of whatever. I guess the concern I would have is how do you know that the thing that they've proposed is the lowest noise profile of all of the potential stuff that's out there, right?
Do you want to say the lowest feasible noise profile? I mean, I still don't know how we would as staff know what's the quietest technology out there, but we would have to rely on the applicant to provide some documentation of that, I think.
Yeah. I mean, do they have to document if there's a hundred different manufacturers and, uh, types of cabinetry and do they have to provide you a chart that says, you know, here's all a hundred options and this is the one that's the, or do you say, you know, here's the, the, you know, if they come to you with five options and they say this is the lowest, but what they omitted were five that maybe we don't know about that are quieter and, but they're more expensive, but how are we going to validate? That would be my concern with this language, so.
Maybe it could just be said with a low noise profile. Maybe that would be sufficient. I don't know if it's saying anything very specific, but might be better than nothing.
Dan, your concern is already in the language that's there. If you go back to the prior draft, that includes a reference to the mechanical cooling system with the lowest feasible noise profile.
Yeah, that's already there.
So that issue is, is present.
Yeah, I had an issue with it there too. But that's neither here nor there.
Yeah.
So I suppose in analogy would be, you know, there are other places where the code requires feasibility, right? This is still the feasibility analysis. Feasibility is a term of art. So for example, where we're requiring like the smallest feasible, Andrew or Allison. I mean, how are we currently asking applicants to prove up that it is the lowest, the smallest feasible? Or whatever, the most S feasible, do they have to give, you know, eight designs and they show you this is the lowest, the smallest one? Um, maybe that's the way to look at this.
Yeah. I mean, I think that you're asking for the smallest feasible or you'd ask them to show the equipment that needs to go in there and what size it is and, you know, what's the smallest enclosure that can fit in physically?
Yeah. Uh, and, and I think I, I appreciate that approach when, especially here, you know, to Commissioner Murphy's point, if we said, you know, or someone else said a low noise profile, I would then say, well, we should define what that threshold is between low and high. Um, obviously we don't want to, um, move that up. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Murphy or Commissioner Weinberg, any comments on the proposed change in language here?
Ted, go ahead.
No, I'm okay with it. Go ahead.
Um, I'm okay. I, I tend to agree with Eileen in that it does simplify it. It does uh, get us out of the business of talking about different types of systems. And so I think, I, I, I think the Carolyn's recommendation is a good one.
Okay. Tiffen, do you have any last, uh, comments?
I, I'm fine with it. I think either way is fine with me.
Great. All right. Well, hearing that then, uh, all those in favor of the proposed amendment as written, uh, please, uh, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the amendment passes five to zero.
And I think that is the last thing, other than the one I said I would come back with later, um, that's the last thing I had on my list. Thank you.
Why don't you go ahead and, uh, uh, yeah, you can look at that and I'll go to the rest of the group and see if there's any other
Yeah.
commentary or changes.
Sounds good.
Uh, why not? I'll just sort of go one by one. Uh, Commissioner Weinberg, do you have any, uh, suggested changes or?
Yeah, I, I guess, uh, uh, raising what I, I mentioned earlier. Um, I think that the code currently does not express a preference between wooden poles and non wooden poles versus attached to buildings, uh, or attached to wires type of thing. Um, and I think that it probably should. I, I think that when you have a hollow pole, you have a better opportunity to hide stuff, hide wires, hide um, uh, things that, uh, the, uh, otherwise would look, uh, messy on the outside of the pole. Whereas when you have a wooden pole, I presume, uh, digging a hole through the middle of it would be prohibitively expensive, uh, to put wires. So they end up just kind of tacking it onto the exterior of the pole. Uh, so I'm kind of inclined to, uh, have the code at least express a preference, if not require, uh, the hollow poles unless there's for some reason proof that it's infeasible in a particular location. But wanted to get other people's thoughts on that.
Anyone have any thoughts? Commissioner Goodman?
I'm not generally into kind of regulating where you don't need to. I can kind of see what you're saying, like maybe if it, if it's hollow, that does provide, um, some opportunity to hide the wires. I guess I don't feel super strongly. I, I wouldn't want to say you couldn't use wood. I mean, if we wanted to say something, not so much to do with the material, but more to say, you know, polls that could accommodate the wires, either hidden from public, maybe just say hidden from public view, something like that, because they could maybe even go behind. I think, you know, I think that's kind of a good point. You want to hide the wires if you can, but um, I guess I would also just generally say where we don't really need to sort of over-regulate, I would, I would tend not to. I also think materials could change in the future. So that's the other reason why I'd be maybe less inclined to be really specific.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Commissioner Murphy? Okay, any other thoughts, Commissioner Murphy?
You know, I, I, I think Tiffin's point is good. We don't want to micromanage this. But I do think that Ted's suggestion of, of, you know, preferring that type of material that, that things can be hidden within, certainly would be an improvement, having a wooden pole with wires outside my house. I can appreciate the, the point. Allison, do we have a sense as to, to what the, the typical new pole is, is looking like?
Andrew might want to pipe in on this, but I, what I've heard from him is that, you know, if it's a PSE-owned pole, I think they're typically replacing them with wood poles. But if it's a standalone wireless thing, wireless pole, they typically do the hollow ones so that they can conceal things inside. Want to say anymore about that?
Hi, Andrew Leana, I'm having some video problems, so sorry that I have no video today. But yeah, just to corroborate with what Allison said. Usually whenever there's a PSE pole, so we've only had a couple of standalone poles requested, basically. We've had one where they did do a hollow pole, non-wooden pole. But most of the ones were like PSE removed the pole for some reason, they've requested to just put in a new wooden pole in the place.
I suspect that the wooden poles are probably more cost-effective, but I, I don't know what the relative cost would be for the hollow poles.
One of my guesses that they're probably, sorry, they're probably also playing dual purpose, right? Because if they're replacing a wooden pole, it means there's probably already above ground cabling and all sorts of other utilities and things that having a metal pole would make very difficult to accommodate. That would be my guess, but sorry, Eileen, go ahead.
Oh, sure. I just wanted to point out too, what, what I've heard from providers is essentially that a preference for, for metal poles or spun concrete, just from a weight perspective. If you're housing more than one antenna for the, for the extent that that's feasible and other equipment, things like that. So it's, my experience and other jurisdictions lines up with staff. Is that typically the, the utility companies, the PSEs will want a wooden, but not always. But that the providers themselves, like either spun concrete or, or metal typically.
Okay, Carolyn, did you have any thoughts or?
No, no, not on this one. Thank you.
Okay, so given that commentary, Ted, like, do you think that it's necessary to add? And if so, where would you suggest we do it? Or do you think that, given the context that was provided, that we're probably the market forces are driving the, the intent?
Right. It sounds like the, any new poles that are coming in from the wireless companies are likely going to be hollow poles rather than it being, moving towards wood poles, or at least it sounds like that's the trend that we're seeing. So I think if we were to require hollow poles or to make a strong preference for that, the primary folks affected by that would be the utilities. But I guess when they replace a utility wooden pole, they wouldn't be subject to this code, right? This code is only talking about wireless facility, right?
Well, sometimes the installation of a wireless facility triggers them to replace the pole because they need a higher pole to accommodate all of the things that are going to go onto it, all of the wiring and the small cell equipment.
Well, I, I think it would be useful to have a clause that, that states a preference for poles that can conceal wiring from public view. Whether we actually start talking about wood versus non-wood in that, or whether we just use the terminology that Tiffin was talking about. You know, just focus on the outcome of concealing the wiring from public view. I think it would be worthwhile to have something stating that substance. I don't have a motion prepared for that, but if you wanted, during a break, I could sketch one up, I guess.
Okay, Carolyn?
Yeah, I apologize for being a little bit lost here in the discussion and I, I would like to see, if possible, the kind of language that's being proposed here, because I, I do in principle support what Ted is saying. I just don't quite understand how it fits into the text. So if he has got a chance to drop that up, I'd sure like to see it.
Yeah, well, we'll have to do that quick, because once we're done going through this, we're gonna hopefully try to approve this so that we can move on to our next piece of business. Okay, before we break for Ted to look at some sort of language, are there any other either Tiffin or Commissioner Murphy, do either of you have any suggested changes or discussion? I see Commissioner Murphy's shaking his head no.
I don't have anymore. I was just looking at the text on the screen and it looks like, I'll, I'll take another read through that and see if it kind of covers or you know, what Ted was talking about, or if it could be modified. But I don't have anything else.
Okay. So with that, I think we are, we just have maybe the one thing, Carolyn, that you're going to bring back and then Ted looking at this. We're at the ninety-ish, ninety-eight minute mark. So maybe it warrants taking a quick five to 10-minute break to allow Ted to consider his motion. And then we'll come back and do final the, the last two final amendments and then move forward with the approval. Does that sound okay to everyone?
Sounds good to me.
What time? Should we come back forty-five or fifty?
Let's come back at, let's just come back at seven fifty.
Okay.
Cool.
Great. Thank you. See you in 12 minutes.
Looks like everyone is back. Let me just double check Andreas here. Oh, there she is. Hello, hello. All right. Thank you very much. Let's go back then to Commissioner Weinberg. Do you have a? Were you were able to put something together?
I think so. So on page 11, between sections 12 and 13, I'm going to make a motion that we add a new paragraph between those two that has the following single sentence. The addition or replacement of a pole for a small wireless facility shall require a stealth design if feasible.
I have a feeling that you're opening us up to a can of worms around defining what a stealth design is, but.
Is defined.
Well, it's defined, yeah.
I see Eileen raising her hand. Go ahead.
So I just want to flag this because I don't want to create any unintended consequences. Stealth under the federal regulations means something very specific. And in fact, it means a facility that is designed to not look like a facility. So for example, a mono fur a facility designed to look like a tree is a stealth facility. And I just want to be clear that we're talking the small wireless facilities here. These are the, you know, 30 to 60 foot high facilities that are going to be mostly in your rights of way and not the, in this particular section of your code, and not the much larger macro facilities, which are typically the mono fur. So just if we're going to use the word stealth, I want to make sure that we know that that is a term of art under the federal regs.
Is that a motion, Dan?
Ted, is that your intent to serve that as a motion? Or do you want to make any changes based on the commentary?
If I'm understanding what Eileen said correctly, she's saying that this the stealth design term of art refers to things that are larger than the small wireless facilities that I was applying it to, and that may cause difficulty. Is that correct, Eileen?
Typically, again, again, the definition of stealth under the federal regs is a facility designed to look like something other than a facility. So I'm trying to think of if I've even seen them with respect to small cells. I don't think it's out of the question, but my mind usually goes to the mono furs, to the cactuses, to the ones that look like palm trees, those kinds of.
Wanted to call our attention to section 10 up above, which says that antennas, equipment, conduit cable shall be located within the building or pole to the maximum extent feasible. So we're already requiring things to be inside the pole if usable.
Maybe would it satisfy if it basically said, you know, inside the pole or hidden from view? Or otherwise hidden from, I know, then you have to think of whose view, but. I guess I would start by saying, I think we have enough in there, but but if we wanted to beef it up a little bit, I'd be okay with that, too.
I'm looking at section 10 to see if it essentially accomplishes what I'm after. And it's almost there, I think. The the one thing I'd be concerned about with with section 10 is that an applicant could say, well, we can't put it inside the pole because the pole is wood. And therefore it's infeasible. I'm wondering, would that pass the feasibility test to say, well, we will let them do it, have wires in the outside of a wooden pole because it would be infeasible to drill it into a wooden pole? Or would we come back to them and say, well, you can do a non wooden pole then? I am unfamiliar with the exact wording of the feasibility clause, but would 10 essentially require them to use something that is non wooden that can have wires up the middle unless they can somehow prove that for some reason, the metal wouldn't work there?
So another option, which I believe there are a few references in the code would be to require shrouding of the or conduit of exposed wiring outs on a wooden pole. So that way you don't have all these loose wires and they're just in one. One conduit, which the code already requires to be colored the same color as the pole. So it would have to be brown to match the wooden.
Currently requiring shrouding?
In certain places, yes. So I just did a control F in the the wooden pole design standards, it is on page 13 nine, and it says any related equipment, including but not including to ancillary equipment, radios, cables, associated shrouding, microwaves and conduit, which are mounted on wooden poles. And it tells you how far it can be from the pole. And then it also says all related equipment must be painted or color matched to the wooden.
But we're not requiring shrouding then. You could I thought I heard you suggesting the possibility of requiring shrouding. Is that is that did I hear correctly?
You. So there are shrouds required in subsection D. Those are the ones attached to buildings in the wooden pole section, just a very quick section. It doesn't look like it's necessarily required, but let me double check that as well. It's been a it's been a moment. Okay, so here we go. We do require this section seven. All cables shall be concealed either within the canister antenna or within a sleeve between the antenna and the wooden pole that is colored to match the wooden pole.
Is this wooden pole or this is for wooden poles? Okay.
We're in the wooden pole section. Yes.
So we require shroud for wooden. Do we require shroud for non wooden?
For not wooden, you require it to be through the through the center of the pole itself.
Oh, so it does. It does specifically say that. Is that correct?
Let me find the section for you. That's my recollection.
Yes, that's correct. It's in subsection B two of the not wooden poles.
I guess the outcome I'm trying to accomplish with the with the motion is to get away from having poles with things attached to them and have the option for poles that just have things going up the middle. And when there's a wooden pole that needs to be replaced so they can get something taller, I'd like that to then be an improvement in terms of the visual effect for people nearby so that it becomes essentially something that has wires going up the middle or that are not visible, essentially. I think that having stuff shrouded or having stuff that is colored the same, but attached to the pole is still inferior in terms of visual experience than having it go up the middle of the pole.
Carolyn?
If Ted wants to make a motion that poles that are non wooden that can have the apparatus put in the inside are preferred to wooden poles, I would second that. So. I mean, it seems to me that that's where you're headed Ted is a preference for a pole that can internalize all of the.
Well, during the break, there were two drafts of this thing that I wrote out. The first one was saying when adding or replacing a pole, the design shall effectively conceal the antennas and all the stuff that's in there in in paragraph 10 from public view if feasible. And then I realized there is this term stealth that or self design that I tried to leverage apparently inappropriately. So maybe we could go back to my first draft, which I think is aligned with what you were just alignment with what you were just saying. Carolyn. If you want, I could rephrase the motion to and read off the draft for that one.
Yeah, why don't you read that off? If that's the motion that you want to make, and then we can take comment on that if there's a second.
Okay. So the I guess the draft that I'm proposing then is to say, when adding or replacing a pole, the design shall effectively conceal the antennas and associated equipment from public view if feasible.
Okay. I'll second that.
And if I said that too fast, the that's all right. I'll continue. We'll conceal the antennas and associated equipment. On view. My first draft rather than trying to get all the self designed, but oh, well.
Okay, so the amendment's been proposed by Commissioner Weinberg, and I believe it was seconded by Commissioner Boatsman.
And thank you for your patience, everyone.
Sure.
Okay. If so, Commissioner Murphy or Commissioner Goodman, do you have thoughts on that? I mean, we've heard unless Ted, you want to add more, but I think it we heard the rationale behind this. Any other thoughts from other folks, Commissioner Murphy?
I kind of like the idea. I'm not sure if we've got the drafting quite right, but I think the notion of new or replacement poles shall shall have the conduit and cable located within the pole to the maximum extent feasible. Kind of borrowing from paragraph 10 and simplifying it.
Mike, do you mind repeating that? Are you combining the two?
Well, it'd be a separate separate sentence, separate paragraph. But we just sort of combining what Ted was saying is newer placement poles shall have the conduit and cable located within the pole to the maximum extent feasible. And that leaves the decision about the type of pole, et cetera, to the install provider.
I mean, to me, that sentence, the second sentence, you just said, there is no different than what the standard is today. I mean, we're.
But I guess. Utility pole gets a wooden utility pole gets replaced for the purposes of adding a wireless facility and having something that's taller. Currently, they're allowed to use wood for the replacement. Even if a metal pole with a hollow middle could have been used. I guess what I'm trying to do is to nudge it towards using the hollow middle and they can only use the wood pole if they can prove that was infeasible to use a metal pole.
I like what Ted is saying there. And to me, right, so far, the thing we've only added to what we already have is that this comes into play when you are adding a new pole or replacing a pole.
Yeah.
So that's good. We should say that, I think. To me, the way it's this is coming together is basically precluding wooden poles. I mean, if we don't really have to say that, that's fine with me, but do we need to just say that? You know, we shall, if a newer replacement pole shall be capable of is concealing the the stuff inside. Period.
I guess I hadn't really like, I hadn't gone so far in my head is to think, is there a preference for like wood versus metal? I haven't really, I haven't given that much thought. I don't. I mean, I guess the wood ones are kind of ugly or the metal ones better.
Functionally, I would be surprised if there's a difference. I think I think it's sometimes aesthetics that the metal ones conceal stuff up the middle and it is less likely to catch your eye than would one that's got, you know, these conduits attached with brackets every 10 feet or so attaching the conduit.
Well, maybe the first question we should ask the commission and staff as well is just do they generally look better? Do people think they look better? And then the second thing is, what is the downside to effectively requiring some sort of, you know, metal or constructed material? If there is a downside.
Yeah.
Eileen's eyes got really big when you said that, so.
His eyes? I can't everyone, so.
If I had made a face, I didn't mean to. I didn't mean to make one there. I always got to watch my face on video, so.
I was I was being rhetorical, but yeah, I mean, it would be interesting and understanding. I mean, that's a bold statement. What I was going to say in all of this is that what you're trying to say with a bunch of words is we don't want to allow wooden poles. And so, you know, do we just scrap that whole section and say new wooden poles? You know, new and replacement wooden poles are no longer permitted. And so then the question is, I think, to what Tiffin just said, what are the downstream implications of a statement that bold? And, you know, I'll lend my view in that I think we've already heard that the market already prefers non wooden poles. And the only reason why they're being used is because we have entire sections of town where there are wooden poles and from a consistency and congruency perspective, they replace them in order to maintain the system. You know, the the way that it's designed. So, you know, I don't know if if either Allison or Andrew or Eileen have perspectives on that, but I guess I think to the bigger question, what you're really trying to get to Ted, and what I've heard from Carolyn is that you're trying to say we should not allow wooden poles.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to try and improve the way that the community looks. And I think that having metal poles with the wires going up the middle looks better than wooden poles with stuff attached on the outside. So I think effectively it means as the wooden poles get replaced, they should be replaced with metal.
So my one.
Oh, I was just going to ask if Andrew was listening if now I'm trying to remember back to what you said earlier in terms of do it sounded like a metal or some sort of fabricated pole was generally the preference anyway for new ones going in. Are there are there certain reasons why we should keep the option to replace with wood poles? Or if Andrew's not there, maybe I don't know anyone. I guess I'm just like hesitant to without vetting it thoroughly, maybe.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So in the times where they have proposed new poles, I think that there have been three of them. Two of them have been with the sort of prefabricated metal poles where the conduit would be run up inside of them. I do believe that we had one where they were sort of like the the PSC pole was being removed and they put in a replacement pole for that. And they just wanted to have that pole that already was there approved under a new permit, if that makes sense.
So did they actually keep the same physical pole or they replaced it with one that looked the same?
So whenever. So whenever they originally came in for their small cell permit, they put in a new wooden pole, the PSC. Either they had to like move it like 20 feet down the road or something to get it into the right of way or something along those lines and they ended up just keeping the wooden pole.
Oh, I see. They had, it was the same pole. They just moved it to a different location.
Correct.
Okay, so I don't know if that'd be considered new or replacing or just that's more like moving. Oh, I guess I'll just say that I don't feel like super strongly about this one way or the other. If there's no like significant downsides to kind of coming out with a bolder statement that we just don't want the the wooden structures where it runs on the outside. That's fine.
Let me, I see Eileen, you've come off of mute. I didn't know if you had a comment and then we'll go to Commissioner Boatsman and Commissioner Murphy.
I don't have a comment so much, or well, I guess I do as far as just what, what I've seen and what I've heard. I don't, we don't have PSC at the table, so I don't know if there's like a engineering reason that they would want a wooden pole, but it might be something to consider. The other thing too is just as we're considering aesthetics. You'll hear from providers, there's always trade-offs. So if you want more things consol can contained and concealed within the pole, you end up with a fatter pole. A lot of times there is a preference for more streamlined everything in the pole, but just kind of know that there's a trade-off here of you're gonna get a fatter pole if everything's in the pole. So that's just it. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Boatsman?
Yeah. I was just thinking that's some wording that my work is new or replacement poles shall be designed to enclose equipment and appurtenances if feasible. Really don't mention the wood poles at all. Our definition in the code of feasible covers this situation. For example, if it's not really in the community's interest to put in a metal hollow pole because there's a reason to have a wooden pole there for their utilities. The feasibility, this, this definition, I think, would would take care of that as an issue, but it would be stating a preference for where we're feasible. You know, you put in something that hides everything. So anyway, that, that would be, I think, some language that I think would work.
I'm just reading item B there, section one. To me, that language fulfills everything that I think we're trying to do. I know that that's in the section for non-wooden poles, but
Section one?
Yeah.
Where's that?
B1, right there. Antennas and the associated equipment enclosure shall be sited and installed in a manner which minimizes the visual impact by either fully concealing it or through a concealment plan. All conduit wires must be routed internally to the pole. Frankly, this could all be pulled and cut and put into the wooden pole section with some minor modification, just instead of saying routed internally, it just says it has to be concealed. Like, I don't want to reinvent the wheel here. Like, we've got all of this in here. I'm not a big fan of banning wooden poles outright. So let me go to Commissioner Murphy and then I'll come back to you, Carolyn.
Yeah, while we were looking at this, I, I took a minute and spent some time scrolling through section C, the wooden pole design standards. And the problem with what we're talking about doing now would really require us to go back and, and go through all section C and make sure we're not creating conflict because there are a number of things in section C that would be contradicted by requiring wooden poles. And so we would be reinventing the wheel and would require quite a bit of work to, to properly cross-reference and revise section C because some of the wooden pole design standards, those are for existing wooden poles. And so, you know, you, you've got to correlate any changes to what, what we're talking about here with that section, unless you're gonna say you know, totally rewrite that by just saying no more wooden poles and except for existing ones, you can do these changes, but that's still quite a bit of work to revise that.
I mean, we already have on page 14, item 13, all cables and wires shall be routed through conduit along the outside of the pole. It should be colored, powder coated, or have other permanent coloration to match the pole. It should be minimized to the number technically necessary to accommodate the facility. I mean, there's elements of all of this already scattered in here.
Right.
So, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm not want to try to rewrite this on the fly. You know, it's, it's frankly something we should have brought up a month ago at the last meeting and have the staff be able to work on reconciling. So I guess the question is, well, let me go to Carolyn and then I'll go to that.
We go back to the section on the deployment, which I think is exhibit B, is that correct? Or is that C? It's a very short exhibit. It's kind of the general requirements before you get into things like wood or non-wood.
It's section A.
Is that A?
Yeah.
Okay. For, yeah, this is it. This is it.
Exhibit B is small cell deployment, A is macros.
Yeah. So in this section, you could put your preference for non-wooden poles for new installation of poles or replacement poles. You could just say new or replacement poles for small wireless facilities shall be non-wooden if feasible. And then everything else still pertains to if you're putting in a wooden pole, you do it this way. If you're putting in a non-wooden pole, you do it that way. But in this section, you could state your preference and then end of story.
So I, I'm gonna go back to my experience in over 20 some odd years of doing this sort of code work. I'm really reticent to write this stuff on the fly without having staff be able to evaluate it and get the proper people to the table. And the unintended consequences of that happening. You know, I maybe go back to the statement I made before and, and by the way, we haven't floated this out there in a way that would give the public the ability to provide comment on the proposed change depending on, you know, how drastic we wanted to make it. You know, I'm, I'm wondering if we just put some sort of language in the, the brief that we send to the council saying that you know, there's still concern related to the concealment of equipment on wooden poles, understanding that they're common on the island, but also not the preferred. You know, preferred method for standalone, you know, newer standalone poles and that that would give staff potentially more time to address the matter in front of the council without going through the process of writing a bunch of code that's you know, potentially more problematic than it is helpful in, in solving this, partly because I think there's enough other places in here where the intent of what we're talking about already exists. So it's just a matter of you know, how, how, how deep do you want to make the cut on the design requirements for for these things?
And can I propose something? See if it's, I'm not in favor of kind of sending counsel too many big questions because they're gonna have even more problems than we have. I mean, they've got a lot, a lot more on their docket every night than we do. I would say something like for this number C, essentially something like hollow replacement poles are preferred. So the wiring can be, you know, sent through the middle. Like, just leave the material out of it. Maybe one day they'll make poles out of like some modulated wood and they'll the middle of it, you know, who knows? I mean.
I do have engineered wood poles that are square. I have no idea how they're designed, but.
Very good point.
I mean, I, I think I'd almost say leave everything we've done alone, but if we want to, if the preference is really to run the wiring through the middle, then let's just say like poles that enable wiring to be run through the middle are preferred. If the question is, we don't want to see wood, that's kind of a different issue.
You should say equipment and appurtenances rather than wiring. Wiring is too narrow, just equipment.
Okay, so before we tackle this, there was some text that we added that Ted had suggested. Ted, was that a formal motion or?
I, I'm, I'm okay with amending the motion to use the text that Carolyn was just suggesting. So essentially removing the the stuff that's in red down here and replacing it with what she had.
Okay, so why don't we just withdraw your motion and then was it Carolyn or Tiffin's language up top that we just discussed that you were?
Some of the hollow poles, I think it was Tiffin actually said hollow.
Okay.
Hey, that's Could you just change that language for the motion? Do we need a new one?
I, I, I don't think we had a second on the original motion if I
Well, well, Ted, if you're happy with that, why don't you make a motion for that one?
Okay.
Sorry, one sec. Andrew, did we have a second on the original motion or?
Did not. I don't think so.
Yeah, so you can just withdraw the motion Ted and feel free to make a new one.
Sure. So I, I withdraw the previous motion and I move that we add section C in or paragraph C in section 190670 saying that hollow poles that can conceal equipment and appurtenances shall be preferred.
I'll second that. Yeah, I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Boatsman. Any other discussion or conversation?
Can I add one clarification to the motion, please, Chair?
Sure.
It should be adding a new letter C because there was already a letter C.
Ah, okay. Is it inserting a new paragraph between what used to be?
B and C. Thank you for the clarification, Andrew. Okay, any last commentary on this statement? Okay, all of those in favor of the amendment as written, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes five to zero.
Thanks for the collaboration, everyone. We got it. We did it.
Yay. Nice work, Tiffin. You sewed it up.
Okay, with that, I'm trying to remember, Carolyn, did you have something else? Or did we already cover yours?
Nope, I had something else and it's right there in the middle of the page right now. It's become D. It used to be C.
Okay.
Okay, so here's my new, oh my God, where is it now? So much going on here. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that D, read as follows. Replacement utility pole, street lighting, streetlight standard. With the express permission of the city, a streetlight standard may be installed for the purpose of installation of new small wireless facilities instead of a wooden or non-wooden utility pole. The design of the streetlight standard shall be in accordance with city requirements in effect at the time of application, if any. Then the rest remains the same.
Not part of that, but I'm gonna need you to read it again.
Do you want me to read it again?
Please.
Okay. Replacement utility pole, streetlight standard. With the express permission of the city, a streetlight standard may be installed for the purpose of installation of new small wireless facilities instead of a wooden or non-wooden utility pole. The design of the streetlight standard shall be in accordance with the city requirements in effect at the time of application, if any.
Okay, is there a second to that?
No, second, sure.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Boatsman and seconded by Commissioner Weinberg. Carolyn, can you maybe talk to how this is different than the text that's there?
Sure, sure. Learned a little bit about streetlight standards and street lighting since our last meeting. And basically the thing you put street lighting on is called a streetlight standard. And the light that you put on it is called a luminaire. So in this, we have a little bit of terminology problems, I think, that should be corrected in regards to that. But starting with the first sentence, what I find really confusing here is we are saying that you can do two things. Hold on a second, just a minute. Let me just read what I had written here. Okay. Okay, so essentially we're saying that two things can be permitted in the form of something else. I think it's just, I think it's kind of confusing. So this is why I'm suggesting to make the something else be the beginning of the sentence. And to make it clear that that something else is substituting for the other two things.
Okay.
And maybe the words, now that some of the previous discussion we've had over Ted's recommendations, maybe I'm a little too wooden, so to speak, in my use of the words wooden and non-wooden utility pole. Maybe it could just say utility pole. That would probably be fine. So skip that. Does that, does that make, sound clear? I mean, what I meant to say is we don't need the words wooden and non-wooden in the, in my, my motion, so it's probably useless.
Okay.
Just the clarification, it's not really changing the meaning. It's just making it easier to understand.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna ask Eileen, based on this text, I mean, I, I see no difference nor additional clarity in, in this versus what was there before, but I'm wondering, is there any unintentional change here or even intentional change that you think is either helping or hurting the existing language?
It looks, and I, and I presume that this is intended to replace the current two, first two sentences of section D.
Yes.
Leaving the third, okay, I just want to be clear. So perhaps the use of the word utility pole is inappropriate. Maybe just replacement pole, just because a pole isn't always a utility pole. So the, for example, the wireless The, for example, the wireless providers, they don't consider themselves utilities. I mean, they're, they're not regulated as utilities. That's, that's a whole, you know. Other conversation, two coffee kind of conversation, that's a long one. So, but. As far as getting away from the intent of the original language, I don't think this does that. I think it's just a. A subject change where, as Commissioner Boatsman said, where you are saying that a light standard may be installed, that's the first. Portion of the sentence, um, as opposed to it's at the end of the sentence in the cur, in the current version. So I think that's what Commissioner Boatsman is trying to do, is just bring the subject forward to the front of the sentence as opposed to the. End of the sentence. I don't, I don't see that it changes the meaning unless any of you see that it does.
May I add another comment? Um, Dan?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I, I did forget to explain a couple of things, um. The very first phrase is there, replacement utility pole dash street, it says street lighting right now, so I want to clarify that. The lighting is not, does not correlate with a pole. You know, the lighting is the thing, you know, it's the luminaire that you install on the pole, so um, if we're talking about a pole, we should talk about a standard. So that, that was why I inserted the word standard there. It's also the same reason why I delete the word lighting in the second sentence. The design of the streetlight standard shall be in accordance with the city lighting requirements, okay? The standard is one thing, the lighting is something else, and the city has no lighting requirements, so. You know, if we're just talking about a standard, we should just delete the word lighting, because that's not what it's about.
This is so confusing to me. So this is like, you're basically saying they can install the streetlight pole, but no light on the pole?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that the thing you're putting in is called the streetlight standard. It's not called street lighting, it's a standard, it's a pole.
I mean, I, I think they're, they could be kind of interchangeable. But, but I guess my point is like, what are you trying to do? Like, what's your big concern that you're trying to mitigate?
I'm just trying to make this be accurate. I mean, you, you, you're not, you're not replacing a utility pole with lighting. Replacing it with a pole, and the name of the pole is a streetlight standard. Okay, and you could, and, and basically what the purpose of this section is that I understand is. They're trying to tell the applicant, you can put in a streetlight standard instead of a telephone pole if you want to. Or instead of a hollow utility pole, you can do that according to this requirement. So I just think it needs to say that a little more clearly. And then the design of a pole is not in cor, in accordance with lighting requirements. That's, you know. Those are two different things. You can't design a pole according to how many lumens you're supposed to have at an intersection. No, I just suggest deleting.
Presumably, if they're putting in a streetlight standard, they're gonna be attaching a light to it, therefore it. Whatever they attach to it does need to uh, adhere to those, so I, I do slightly disagree that it's irrelevant. You know, uh, my comment to this is, you know, I, I get where you're going with it, but to borrow from Commissioner Murphy, I'm. I'm sort of feeling like this is a, a solution in search of a problem, like I just don't know that this is. It doesn't strike me as something that's, that's broken in the current code and um. I'm not sure there's any additional clarity that's derived from this, other than the nuance of some of the language. That's just my opinion.
Well, we have made many changes just for the purpose of clarification of language, and this is, I'm no longer proposing. The removal of, or, or the, you know, not allowing. Light standards to be put in for placement of wireless facilities. So let's not get that discussion confused with this. Motion that I have made. This motion has been made to correct um, terms and to make it more clear. And um, it is very definitely two different things to put in a streetlight standard and to then install lighting on it. The city engineer has said that. A pole like this can be used for wireless facilities, and if the. Neighbor's petition to have lights attached to the pole, that can be done. You don't necessarily have to put lights on. A streetlight standard.
Yep. Let me, let me ask this of Andrew and um, and Allison. Uh, with the language change that's proposed here.
Hey, Dan, before you do that, can I just propose one language change to it to make it at least more clear and then we can discuss?
Sure.
Okay, so I would say with the express permission of the city, a streetlight standard. May be installed instead of, or may be installed as a new small wireless facility. So basically delete for the purpose of installation of.
Is the streetlight standard, I mean, is the pole the facility? I thought the pole was the thing that you attach the facility to.
Well, I feel like it's all the other poles we're talking about.
Yeah, well, I mean, this gets to the original one where it says it's permitted in the form of a streetlight standard, like when we're talking about the form of a pole. Like, that's one of the options of, of, of a pole type. So that, that's kind of why I get back to, I'm not sure what was broken with the first language.
Replacement utility pole or new utility pole, they're saying, they think it's just clear to say a replacement utility pole. Or new utility pole may be permitted in the form of a new streetlight standard. I, I find that extremely confusing. I, I don't quite get what that means.
How about just replacing the word as with the word for? A new streetlight standard may be installed for a new wireless facility.
Yeah, that's, that, I think that seems pretty clear. Mm-hmm, maybe install. New wireless facility, so. So, so Andrew, could I get a, a, an answer? Do we install wireless facilities on poles or is the pole the facility? I, I mean, I really think it's the former. Hello?
So I, I can maybe jump in here. We have, you would skip down to the definition section, that's exhibition B. Or exhibit D, I'm, I'm sorry, Andrew.
I think Andrew's got a delay, which is why he's having time jumping in. It sounds like he's got a delay in his connection, so.
So I, I would, I would hazard that this is a support.
Yeah, I'm having a lot of technical difficulties, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Eileen.
So technically, I, I think the, the term that we're, we're searching for here is, is support, right? The, the light standard will support a new small wireless facility.
Yeah.
Cool.
That sounds good. So I just think we're just clearly trying to tell the applicant that if they want to put in a streetlight standard for their support, they can do that.
And then you would go down to this, then the next sentence would start with the design of, and you do, you delete the sort of half sentence before that.
Yes, um, delete the replacement utility pole or new utility pole, right?
Keep the design of.
So you'd keep the part that says the design of the street, but you, I'm just trying to get it.
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's the same. The only thing I proposed changing that sentence was deleting the word lighting. And adding the words if any, or comma if any at the end, because. As far as I know, there aren't any streetlight standards.
Alison, Henry, Alison, on that second red paragraph, just delete that first um, that first clause.
Goodness gracious, I should be looking at it.
There you go, and then, and then that sentence comes to the end, there you go. And then that would replace that, perfect.
Seem to have lost.
Okay, um, so why don't I read it as the text describes and then uh. Uh, unless there's any last call, I see Commissioner Weinberg has his hand up before we.
No, no, I, 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 sorry, that was old hands.
You're an old hand, Ted. So um, are, are you still hearing us, Carolyn?
Well, I've, I've, my Zoom has um, digressed to my taking an exercise class here, so I can't seem to get back. Actual, oh, here we go. Yeah, okay.
There may be more truth to that.
Class, but I've, I managed to scare them off.
There, there's probably more truth to the exercise class than, than not. All right, why don't I, I read what Alison has uh, now updated, and then if there's no last uh, comments, we'll uh, take a vote. So uh, subsection D, or which is the, actually the new D, uh, because it was previously C. Replacement pole hyphen streetlight standard with the express permission of the city, a streetlight standard may be installed to support a new wireless facility. The design of the streetlight standard shall be in accordance with the city, with the city streetlight requirements in effect at the time, if any. Uh, wherever feasible, all equipment and cabling shall be internal to the replacement street lighting standard, that should be streetlight standard. Or concealed through the design and implementation of a concealment plan. Any last comments on that?
Yeah, I have a, a comment. Um, no, it looks really good. Oh, sorry.
But I'm just gonna go to, to Tiffin first.
I'm sorry, sorry.
The proposal was to change it to, certain the sentence, the design of the streetlight standard shall be in accordance with the city. Requirements in effect at the time. Then that'll just like be a little more, give leeway to whatever requirements there are, and then we can get rid of if any, I think. And then go ahead and read it and see if that makes sense.
Okay, with the express permission of the city, a streetlight standard may be installed to support a new wireless facility. The design of the streetlight standard shall be in accordance with the city requirements in effect at the time. Wherever feasible, all equipment and cabling shall be internal to the replacement streetlight standard or concealed through the design and implementation of a concealment plan. Carolyn, you had a comment?
No, Tiffin made the comments that I would have made. Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
All right, uh, seeing no other commentary unless Commissioner Murphy, you had anything? Uh, with that, uh, all those in favor of the uh. Actually, before I do that, I should ask, is there any heartburn from either Eileen or um, Alison in the rephrasing of this? In the way that it's in its current form? Have we missed something unintentionally?
I think it looks okay.
I, I think it does as well.
Okay. Uh, all right, uh, with that, then all of those in favor of the amendment as presented. Please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the amendment will pass five to zero. Okay, thank you very much for that. Uh, before we, oh, good, good idea there, Alison, on saving. I wrote my performance review, I spent an hour on it, and I turned my attention away, and I came back and I lost it all. It, like, it killed me. The uh, are there any other? Amendments or changes that anyone wants to propose before we vote on the main motion? I'm seeing a bunch of shaking heads. Okay, hearing none, uh, I'm gonna go to Andrea and we'll do a roll call vote, uh, please for the approval of the. Uh, small cell, uh, let's see, ZTR nineteen oh zero four. Uh, the draft wireless facility code as amended. Uh, and Andrew, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Murphy?
Oh, you're on mute.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Weinberg?
Aye.
And Chair Hubbell?
Aye.
Motion passed as amended, five to zero.
Yay. Thank you, everyone. All right, that brings us to, and I just want to get the citation correct, uh, item number four. In regular business, which is ZTR nineteen dash zero zero three, related to the sign code update. I've been informed that we have a presentation that'll be fifteen or twenty minutes, and uh. I think Alison will introduce our guest speaker. For the uh, for this, and I believe you'll go over sort of what you're hoping to get out of today's meeting, Alison.
Yeah, um, so this will be our first of three meetings on the sign code. And today, Daniel Kenny is joining us. I think he's just sitting on his camera, there he is. Um, he is the contract attorney that will be working with us on this code amendment. And he's done an initial review of our code and has prepared a presentation. Um, about the Reed versus the town of Gilbert Supreme Court case that he's gonna go over for us. Today, our intention is really just to kind of get that background information for the commission. We'll give you a really high level overview of the code changes, at least areas of the code that. We, we believe will need to be updated. And then we will be preparing a draft code amendment to make available hopefully two weeks in advance of the next meeting. Um, and then on June sixteen, we'll do a public hearing and the first review of that draft code. Um, and then we'll come back for the July meeting for our second review, and hopefully at that point, we'll be ready to make a recommendation. And one more slide, okay. I just wanted to mention quickly the three code sections that we currently have that relate to signs. They're all in different parts of the code. There's one piece for temporary signs, one piece for signs in town center. And one piece for signs outside town center, and that applies to regulated improvements, which are primarily things in the commercial business. Easy in multifamily zones, it does not include residential stuff. Uh, residential uses, although there are some non-residential uses in residential areas such as religious institutions. Some of the various clubs and the beach clubs and things like that. Um, so, you know, there'll be things to think about that relate to residential areas, even though there are other zones for other uses. Um, and with that, I guess I'll, I'll pass it over to Daniel, and he's gonna be giving us a fifteen or twenty minute presentation. And then we'll have some time for questions and discussion at the end. Um, all right, Daniel, go for it. I'm gonna unshare my screen, and you can share yours.
Great, um, can everybody hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thanks so much for having me tonight to talk to you about your sign code and the Reed versus town of Gilbert. Case, we'll get in that in two seconds, and uh, quite the fascinating discussion on the wireless facilities. I, I do that with a lot of my clients as well, so uh, it was interesting to listen to. So I'm going to share my screen for a PowerPoint presentation. When your videos get smaller, it is harder for me to see if you have a question, an eager face or a raised hand, so please do interrupt me at any time. The majority of the presentation is a summary on this case that I'll get into, and so if you've got any further questions on it, please do. Just chime in and interrupt me, um, no problem at all. So I'm gonna share my screen now and dive into that.
Be careful, be careful what you ask for with the interruptions with this.
Fair, well, we'll, we'll see if this is as interesting after uh, three hours.
Okay, so let me just go to the presentation.
Okay, can you see um, the notes? Okay, can you see the notes, screen or the full just slide?
We see the slide.
Perfect, okay, I never know, I've got two screens, I never know which one's gonna pop up. Okay, perfect, okay, so again, my name is Daniel Kenny, I'm an attorney with Ogden Murphy Wallace. And I've worked with the city on a couple of different things, former colleague with your city attorney B O, who's wonderful, you guys are so lucky to have him, and so I'm just excited to work with you on, on this project. And so we'll just dive right into it, what to expect. So a- as Allison mentioned, we're gonna revise your sign code. It's primarily gonna be as a result of a two thousand fifteen Supreme Court case, Reed versus the town of Gilbert. And we'll dive into what that case talked about, why we're doing the revisions. We're probably also gonna have an opportunity for staff to provide some input on kind of fine tuning the code or some smaller revisions that may be kind of lingering out there, waiting for an opportunity to get revised, and so those may be integrated in as well. Again, so you'll have this first touch and then you'll have two more touches. You'll have the opportunity to have a public hearing and have deliberations at a meeting after that and make a recommendation to the city council, just like you did on your prior item. And so that's the quick kind of what we're doing here. And so I, I, I can see my screen by raising hand, who has heard of the Reed versus town of Gilbert case? Oh, well, what am I doing here? No, it, so, so it was decided back in two thousand fifteen and it was very attention grabbing because it really impacted all municipalities across the country. And everybody was kind of scrambling to modify their sign codes to make sure that they were in compliance with this case. I am currently working with multiple cities on their sign codes, so you're kind of right in the thick of it, even though it was back in two thousand fifteen. And so we're gonna dive into that case, even though it's six years later. So the town of Gilbert sign code provisions that kind of brought on the Supreme Court case were divisions of sign regulations based upon the content of those signs. And so they had sections of their sign code that covered things like ideological signs, political signs, which of course every jurisdiction is very familiar with, and temporary directional signs. Each of these different types, and there were more than just those three, those were the primary ones that came up in the case. But they all had different regulations for the size of the sign, the duration that the sign could be out, and, and regulations of that nature. And so thi- this is kind of a summary of how those works. On the left side, there is the sign, the sign size. And so different sign sizes based on if it was political sign, you got that thirty-two square feet. Or the qualifying event sign, six square feet, and then also for duration. Really depending on what you were trying to communicate, on how long that duration of the permitted sign would be allowed. And so what that created was categories of regulations based on the content. And then create, created a hierarchy on those signs. And so that was in a hierarchy based on A-frames or stake signs or monument signs or whatever physical sign type you wanna think of. That created upon ideological signs, political signs, temporary directional signs. And so that's what caught the eye of the courts. And so what happened is the Good News Community Church decided that they were gonna put out signs, they would put out just a few signs, fifteen or twenty temporary signs. These signs were intended, and actually there, there's the pictures of the signs on the slide, they're intent, intended to let the community know where and when their community services would be, would be held. And so it had the church's name, the time and the location for the upcoming service. And then more often than not, they would remove those signs, they'd post them early in the day on Saturday and remove them on Sunday. So we're talking about very low impact, I mean fifteen or twenty signs, this is less than any political sign you're gonna see on the island, this is la- less duration than really any temporary sign I've ever seen out there. So they're really pretty good about it. But what happened, they, they, they did get cited, and so they got cited two times for violations, first for exceeding the time limits. And second for exceeding time limits and failure to include the date of the event. And so, you know, as a lawyer, I'm thinking about just how small this case is. This is the smallest of the small cases that you could possibly have, but remember, we're talking about a United States Supreme Court case. And so it really escalated and escalated quickly. And so what, what, what it came down to is that the Gilbert sign code was content based on its face. And so essentially what that means, and I'm gonna repeat this later, is kind of my rule to take away from this. Is that in order to understand the restrictions that apply to any one of those different signs, you have to look to the content of the sign. So what's written on the sign, the message being communicated. And only when you look at that content, you know what category to put it into, and then you know the, the regulations that apply to it. And so when you think about that, you walk up to a sign, you read it and you see that it's a political sign. And then you go to the code and you go to the category in the code for political signs and you understand that that can only be a certain number of square feet and only have a certain duration. But that exact same physical sign, if it had different message on it, might have a different size allowance and a different duration. That's the problem that we run into. And so I, I'm gonna move fairly quickly through this next quick section because it's a little bit more on the legal side. You've been going at it for a while, I can answer any of your questions, but what, what happens if you, if you have a content based regulation, it's subject, subject to strict scrutiny. And that is the highest level of scrutiny that a court can apply to a municipal regulation. And it has to be narrowly tailored to serve a compelling government interest, and that is really hard to do. I advise my clients that basically you're not gonna survive that, that challenge if you have something that's subject to strict scrutiny, that's typically fatal. Huge hurdle to get over. And so what they had was all of their sign code regulations because in those categories, they were content based, subject to this really high level of scrutiny, really hard to get over. The next level down from that is intermediate scrutiny. Again, this is just a, a term of art that lawyers and judges uses when they're, when they're reviewing these regulations. But if, if you're not regulating based on content, you just need to have it be content neutral, narrowly tailored for a significant government interest. So you move from compelling government interest down to just a significant government interest, just legal words, if you will, and ample alternative channels for communication. So essentially what this means is you can get by with a time, place, manner restriction, that's what these would typically be. So a physical sign type in an, in a location with setbacks from a curb, you know, safety standards, timelines for that particular sign, but with no basis whatsoever on the content of the sign. Just like A-frames can only be in these locations for these times and made of this type of thing. And so the Gilbert had a, a number of governmental interests that it put forward to support its regulations. Those included the aesthetics and traffic safety and tried to, tried to use those to support those content based regulations. And the court very quickly said that those don't cut it. You can't put forward that we want our town to look pretty and it's safer for our drivers to have these sign regulations when they're content based. That's not compelling government interests in the way that we need to find it. So they, they were found to be unconstitutional. And so those fifteen or twenty signs that were put out for, you know, you know, twenty-four hours essentially and only cited twice for violations were unconstitutional, went to the United States Supreme Court and created this rule that all cities across the US are having to deal with. And so this is just the way that I, I have written it out, it's kind of a, a summary of what I had said before. But if when regulating speech, the regulation is split into categories which require you to look to the content of the sign and those categories are treated differently, that regulation is content based on its face and must withstand strict, strict scrutiny. And so does anybody have any questions about that rule? No.
I see none.
Great, okay, and I, I'm keeping my eye. The, the one thing to keep in mind is and this is probably more of an open question than we would all like, but the Reed case dealt with non-commercial signs. It did not speak to commercial signs. There is a Ninth Circuit, which is where we are, federal court in the Ninth Circuit case that has analyzed the regulation of commercial signage and did not use the Reed case holding in, in its decision. It used pre-existing commercial sign, commercial speech regulation law. And so that, that is not the case in all circuits across the, the country. And so there is a chance that there will be a clarifying case from the United States Supreme Court on how this applies to commercial speech. But for right now, we, we, we are able to divide out our analysis and our work on sign codes into commercial and non-commercial because they are regulated under different standards. They're conceptually similar, but one is a lesser standard than the other. When you think about First Amendment protected free speech, that's your non-commercial, it's your personal expressive speech and commercial speech is less that and more, it's just a lesser protected type of speech. So, so that's the rule now, and that's the slight caveat. So when we, when we're looking at sign codes, we're, we're kind of trying to answer these two questions right here. So for your code, the primary thing that we're gonna be looking at is your temporary sign provisions. As you notice from the Reed case, the temporary signs are the ones that predominantly come up because those are the ones that are used for your non-commercial expressive speech. There are a couple of provisions that I've preliminarily identified that we're gonna look into just to make sure that we don't have any issues. I, I told Allison this and I'll, I'll tell you as well, your code is in much better shape than every other code I've worked with for this topic at this phase. You didn't overly break out these categories, which is great news. We still have a few things that we're gonna work on. We're working on that draft and we're gonna have, again, like Allison said, we're gonna have that to you in advance of your next meeting for review in the packet to have a public hearing. One of the provisions has to do with the duration of temporary signs. It's an interesting provision that says temporary signs other than political signs may only be placed for a maximum of ninety days during any year. And so when you think about temporary signs of a non-commercial nature, the, every other sign has a regulation on duration for ninety days, but political signs don't. So you have to, if you think about that rule, you have to go to the sign, read it, see is this a political sign or not a political sign. And then the duration that would get applied to that would change depending on that. And so that's how we'll do that analysis and then we'll provide some language to clarify that. And so what you will not see in your sign code going forward, and again, I'll say, you don't see a lot of it already, so it's not gonna be a huge change. But you're not gonna see specific regulations for political signs. Basically, that language will be gone and what you will have is regulations for temporary signs that will be broadly applicable to temporary signs without regard for the content. And so I, I have, I've worked on sign codes where there's two pages of political sign regulations that are different than other regulations. You don't have that, you have very limited numbers of those. And so the next one, sign types banners, pennants and other attention grabbing devices are only allowed for community wide civic activities with a permit. And so a community wide civic activity is a non-commercial, some sort of event. Again, that would lead me to believe that a political sign or an ideological sign or religious sign, something like that would not have the opportunity to have one of those, only that particular content. And so that's another one that we're gonna look into to try to figure out a way to meet the goals and objectives that are currently in the code without having that content based regulation. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna examine these areas, we're going to obviously look broader at the code to make sure that we're catching everything, find those content based regulations in the non-commercial sphere, and we'll prepare a draft to present that to you. And again, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, staff will be identifying some kind of lingering areas that they've identified through practice and usage of the code where they might be able to find, you know, some smaller revisions. I think that you can probably expect at least a handful of those that will be presented that will be kind of outside of the realm of the Reed case, and so we won't be using that rule that I talked about for those. But it will be cleaning up the code from a practical and usage standpoint to, to make sure that this opportunity of opening up the code gets used to ma- to, to address anything that's lingering out there. And so, yeah.
Sorry, quick, quick question, can you go back to the other, this is, I may be digging in the weeds too soon. But it made me think, if we look at the sign type example, does, who places the sign count as content? So for example, in that example, could you say banners, pennants and other attention grabbing devices may only be installed by a government or like, like a, by the city or this, you know, and, and by an entity, right? Like, uh, uh, and we may be digging too deep, but I was wondering how broadly content is is defined in that case? Does my example make sense?
Yeah, it does, and actually I think you've, you, you, you've actually touched on two separate things and and again, we, we'll dive into more detail with all of this later, but the two things that you've touched on are number one, the city shouldn't be picking, choosing who has the opportunity to use these provisions in the sign code. And so, for example, community wide civic organizations wouldn't get this opportunity even if they put up a political sign, for, for example. So, so you wouldn't wanna pick and choose, it should be open and available to everybody. But your example actually touched slightly separately onto something called government speech, and government speech can be treated differently because it's not First Amendment protected speech nor commercial speech. And so it's kind of its own area. And so I don't recall exactly how your sign code deals with that right now, I didn't spend a whole time looking at those particular provisions, but those can be treated a little bit differently, and so the city, both for kind of the health, safety signs, stop signs, street signs, all those things can be almost exempted from the code in a lot of them. And then also government buildings, parks, reservoirs, all those different things that might have a sign for identification purposes or what have you, would be treated a little bit differently as well. And so we'll kind of partition both of those out.
Great, thank you.
Great, well, I, I, I was just clicking to my last line for, for questions, so that, so, so that's great. And again, you know, we'll be putting, preparing a, a draft for you and we'll be bringing it back, so we'll have more opportunity to talk about these things. We more wanted to give you this, this particular moment, this opportunity to understand why, why we're doing this and what you're gonna see. You know, again, it's not gonna be overly dramatic in the revisions, but at the same time, when you stop seeing things like political signs being identified, we wanna make sure that people understand why, to give that kind of the foundation. And that way, we'll hit the ground running at your next meeting.
Great, why don't I go through the list of folks here and just see if there are any questions? I see Commissioner Murphy has his hand raised.
Yeah, Daniel, are there, I assume there are some lower court decisions following Gilbert that have elaborated in this area, is that something that you're you're looking to, to provide guidance, or has there been much further guidance from lower courts?
Uh, well, so first of all, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit stop share just so we can all kind of see each other for the discussion. If, if you want me to pull it back up, I'm happy to do that. Okay, I can see everybody a little bit better. So yeah, so there's definitely been a number of decisions, most of those decisions have used the Reed case holding. So ju- just from a sequential standpoint, the Reed case would set the precedent and the lower courses, court, courts would just use it. And so there's not gonna be any clarifying from a lower court, they're gonna have to fall in line, if you will. But the, the only clarification that I think is very important is the distinction between commercial and non-commercial that I mentioned. That is one that the courts have used the holding in a specific scenario as a result of kind of the facts behind the, the Reed case.
Okay, uh, let's see, Commissioner Boatsman, do you have any questions? No? Commissioner Weinberg? No, Commissioner Goodman?
Um, yeah, I actually.
Um yeah, I actually do. Well, first of all, I'd say thank you. I'm like, I feel like we've been waiting for years to get to this project, so I'm glad we're finally doing it. Um but my question isn't so much about the um Gilbert case, but it's more about the scope of the project. Um I remember when we were first gonna bring this up, last year, we talked about, you know, where does our sign code not not work? Like, for example, I remember that monument signs were perhaps silent in our sign code, and there was some discussion about whether we ought to um have some provision for monument signs, like for um entrances to some of the neighborhoods on the island. Um so my question is more like, how broadly is it scoped, and where do you see the deficiencies in our current code?
So that's a great question, and I think I'm probably gonna defer to Allison on that. Um cuz I know that there's um some things that are gonna be added that like that I mentioned. I haven't had a lo- a long time to look at that. I got those today. But yeah, go ahead, Allison.
Yeah, we just pulled together a list of sort of the staff-generated ideas um for stuff that Evan would have called code cleanup. Um things that we have identified as we've reviewed permits, sign permits. And one of them is the thing you just mentioned with the the signs outside of neighborhoods in residential areas. So um there's probably ten or twelve things on the list, and they there's several different items, just kind of a high-level overview would be um. So adding clarity about how to measure the size of various types of signs and how to apply those sort of size and location standards. There's, you know, been questions that have come up over time, reviewing different types of signs where code wasn't really clear, or there was kind of a unique style of sign that didn't really fit in with the standard. So we wanna, there's a few different areas where we need clarity on that. Like, one example would be in-town center um window signs, like the decals on windows are allowed to cover twenty-five percent of the of the window area. Does that mean, like, if you've got a building with four large windows, does that mean one window could be completely covered and the other window is completely open? Or does that mean each window can only have twenty-five percent covered? So there's questions like that, that really get into kind of the nitty-gritty details that maybe we didn't think through all the way when we first drafted the code um that we're gonna be bringing forward. Um let's see if I've got another good example. Okay, so like nighttime lighting of signs. Um there's been complaints and concerns that some sign lighting is too bright. So perhaps we wanna add a requirement that those are dimmed or the movements are reduced at, you know, certain nighttime hours or something like that. So we've got a few different items like this. I don't think there are any kind of wholesale changes to the code, but it's clarifying some specific areas and how they're applied.
Hmm, okay, thank you. So we'll get that information in a couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're gonna be working through the actual recommendations to how to revise things here in the next two weeks and hoping to turn that around to you guys with more than the usual one week for the packet. I my goal is to get it out two weeks before the next meeting.
Oh, I appreciate that, but I don't read it that far in advance, so don't worry about me.
I mean, it's also for the public, since we're doing this shorter compressed time frame with only three meetings and having the public hearing um in the next meeting, you know, it's nice to give the public a little more chance to look at things than one week if we can.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Um Allison, following up on uh Tiffin's question there, and your mentioning of uh reduction in brightness of signs. Are you going to, as part of that, look into the uh, I think they call that the dark sky initiatives to try and reduce light pollution overall and the impact on bird migration and things of that nature? Um is that gonna enter into your to your analysis at all?
I am aware of the Dark Skies Initiative. I hadn't really thought through that far in terms of how that related to lighted signs. Um I've definitely seen that applied to like street lighting and building lighting in the past. Um it's certainly something we can consider if you have, especially if you have a specific request about that.
Yeah, it might be worth looking at.
Okay, any other uh questions from the panel for uh Daniel? Well, seeing none, I just wanna say I'll uh echo uh Tiffin's sentiment. This has been a a long time coming. I think Evan years ago was like, the sign code, we're gonna be doing that like right around the corner. And here we are several years later. Um so uh glad to have that. Daniel, thank you for taking the time to uh come and present. I think that was a great overview to just set context and prepare us. Um I do have one uh uh I think one, I guess, thing for Allison, just to consider, we know that we're gonna have um uh at least two, potentially three new uh, you know, commissioners at our next meeting. Um I hope it's only two. Uh I hope that Commissioner Boatsman gets uh renewed. But uh the uh uh we will have new people. And so as a part of that pro- process, um it might be good if we can get a copy of Daniel's um presentation that we can make available to those folks ahead of time. And I'm sure we'll need to do a little recap of this to get them up to speed.
Recorded, so we can definitely share um this presentation with those folks. And then, yeah, if there's any questions or things that we didn't quite understand from the presentation, we can we can go over that next time.
Yeah, I just know that we're gonna have to hit the ground running with them cuz we only have one meeting a month, so.
And if you can email me a copy of the um PowerPoint, I can post it with the pack, today's packet.
I think I have it, Andrea. I'll find it.
I I can re- resend it very quickly as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, um Daniel or Allison, do we have anything else on uh sign code then for this evening? Great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and thanks for waiting. I always hate it when uh you have to wait for three hours for your twenty minutes on the on the spot. So I apologize. Thank you for hanging in there, and uh at least you didn't have to drive all the way here and sit in City Hall for three hours.
Yeah, I'm actually just across the bridge, so it would have been the same, but uh
All right.
I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all soon.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Bye.
All right, uh Allison, anything for the director's report?
Yeah, we have a couple of things. I'm actually gonna ask Andrea to give us an update on the new commissioner appointment process and some other housekeeping things that we need to take care of at the next meeting.
Good evening, commission. Um so as Allison mentioned, um coming up at the June first council meeting is when council will be doing appointments for all of the boards and commissions um across all of our boards and commissions for the city. We had fifteen open seats. Um three of those that were either open or up for um reappointment is that fifteen. Um of those fifteen, three of those seats were on the planning commission. Um so we um have people who have applied for all of these seats, and Carolyn has asked to be reappointed. Um so we will know more after that June first council meeting. And we will be inviting the newly appointed commissioners to join us at the June sixteenth um planning commission meeting. And then as part of our yearly first meeting of the term, um we'll have two items of special business at the beginning of the meeting. Um what the first will be the election of next year's chair and vice chair. Um so Dan will open the meeting for us and do the first part of the election. And then whoever's elected chair will take over from there. Um and then we'll do the same thing for the co-chair. It's um or vice chair. Um so it's very similar process that we did last November-ish or October-ish when we had our first meeting for this term. Um and then in addition to that, we will be doing um a vote and approval of the planning commission bylaws. Um something to note for the commission, if you do have any changes to the bylaws, um we will take those changes in, and we will make the changes so that we can present them to the city attorney, and then we would bring any changes to the bylaws back for bylaws approval at the July meeting. Um I think, did I cover everything, Allison? I think I covered everything.
That was it. Um the only other update I was gonna do is on schedule and kind of upcoming topics. So like we said, we'll be talking about the sign code for the next three meetings, or the next two meetings after tonight, the June and July meetings. In August, we'll, we will not have a meeting. We'll be on a break. And then when we come back in September, um there's a few things that I'm still waiting to see how it shakes out. We may be asked to work on town center retail regulations. So I'm still waiting to hear what council wants to do with that. I think they're going to take that topic back up in July, and we may get some direction at that point um if if they want to do a code amendment. Um and aside from that, we also still have the Boatsman and Thompson code amendments on the docket to look at later in the year. Um and those relate to some nuisance regulations around noise and lighting. And as we mentioned earlier tonight, the um standards for typing of permits and noti- noticing. Uh and final thing, the wireless code that you just approved will go to city council for the first reading on June fifteenth and the second reading on July sixth. So um I will be working with Chair Hubble to get the written recommendation transmitted to council in advance of that. And we'll try to reflect all of the discussion that we had tonight. Um that's all I've got. Anyone have questions about the schedule?
Okay, for me. Uh great. Well, uh speaking of schedule, the next uh item would just be to know uh for the next two meetings, any planned absences for June or July? Anybody knows they're gonna be out?
I I may not be able to make the July meeting. I'll be camping, so it maybe depends a little on if I can get reception.
I I I may similarly.
Or face or any of those things.
That's awesome.
I might I might be in my truck taking the call. We'll see.
What a trooper.
I I I I may be in the same boat as you, Tiffin, actually, so we'll see how long. If we're coming back on Tuesday or Wednesday, I don't know. Um, okay, no other unknown absences for June. June will be important just because we're swearing in the new folks. So if you, you know, can be there, that would be great. Um, okay, and then uh announcements and communications, does anybody have anything to share, anything that's been going on? We don't really have a lot of like committees or board appointments like the council does, so. All right, hearing none. Allison, anything else from your end or Andrea? All right, hearing none. Our next scheduled meeting will be on June sixteenth. And uh I wish everyone a happy and safe uh Memorial Day, if you're uh gonna go and do anything. And uh uh we will see you in a little over a month. And with that, uh if you can please stay on the line until uh uh Andrea has uh closed the meeting, that would be great. And from there, we will uh say that the meeting is adjourned. Thanks.
See you next time.